Now call this regular workshop meeting of Jacksonville City Council to order. Council, you have before you copy the agenda, proposed agenda for tonight's meeting along with some minutes from the November 19th workshop and regular meeting and the December 3rd organizational meeting along with five consent items and I would entertain a motion to cover all that.
Number 13 is skateboard.
And we're adding number 13 to the workshop topics tonight and this will discuss the skateboard decision made over the. Booed option of the agenda with the additions, item number 13 and the minutes and consent items.
Second.
Have a motion and a second any discussion. Here not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Our first item on workshop tonight is we have folks from the Partnership for Children with us and they're going to give us a little update on their operation. Would you want to do a little preface to that?
Yes, sir, I do. The Partnership for Children is an extremely important element in our community. Parenting is one of the greatest challenges that we have in society. While and we know that in the past weekend, we had an unfortunate incident here in this community where a young child was killed because of lack of parenting skills. The presentation that you're going to hear tonight will be a combination of staff members of the partnership as well as Chief Yanaro. I think it's important for the chief to talk to you about the role that this organization plays and the assistance that they give our police department. In order for you to see the screen better, I know you like my new hairdo and my new glasses, but I'm going to step down. You hadn't noticed the new glasses? But I'm going to step back, but at this time I'm going to ask Anne Marie if she would start the presentation, please.
Thank you. Mayor Phillips, Mayor Protem Lozara, city council members and Dr. Woodruff, thank you for allowing us this time really to talk with you again about why our organization exists and how it has been created to support our youngest citizens. My name is Dawn Rochelle and I'm the chief executive officer for the partnership and with me is Anne Marie Raymond, our vice president of advancement and she joins me as does several of our board members and staff members that are in the audience tonight. Much is being talked about in the news right now, not only with the recent child death, but also other things that involve young children. Our coming census and the undercounted population of the zero to five year population, it's a big deal for our community. Our organization was formed around this vulnerable population in 1998 as the first public early childhood funding in the country. Community citizens came together to form our first board of directors and make application for smart start funding. Their goal was to braid together this public investment with private support because children are no small matter. You know the population growth of our area, so it will not surprise you perhaps that our organization has grown from a volunteer part-time CEO in 1998 to a staff of 80 today. We have amazing professional and caring staff that embody a lot of kindness. We understand that the experience that a family has with us will make the difference in whether they allow us to help them. We want to help alleviate stress and while we know that we can't solve everything, we can at least be a person who offers to listen and link them to resources in our community. We must continue to bring state-of-the-art programming and resources to our community so that all children can reach their fullest potential. We must challenge ourselves to evolve and shift and morph programming at the same time because all of us acknowledge that the dynamics for families are so different than they were even just 10 years ago. There is much recognition in this room and I think probably a lot of conversation of the challenges that we face is the youngest demographic in the United States with the average age reported currently at 22.7. We have the highest birth rate per capita in North Carolina, which equates to a growth of a new elementary school a year. How blessed we are to welcome so many new ones to our community every year. Many families are military and this community exists to support those that serve. Serving a military community means that every service that we provide has a global impact and a global reach. As our community continues to grow, the need for families to have quality licensed childcare grows with that. When a parent works, they can only be their best when they know that their child is okay. Our foundational business is training and supporting childcare as a business because we want state-of-the-art classrooms with the best equipped teachers rocking our babies, laughing and smiling with our toddlers, reading to every child of every age and playing games that reinforce with every child that they are smart, that they are loved, and that they are important. We are very proud to have been part of bringing the North Carolina preschool program, early head start and multiple other grants to support this work. All of these programs work to create the safety net for over 3,700 children and families that use these programs every single day. The programs we offer begin to level the playing field for children in a very real way. As a community of young families, we know that financial struggles are very real. The expense of a young child is hard for families. I am sure that if I asked any of you about challenges in those first few years with your children, they are joyous and they are tiresome at the same time. Partners those years as perhaps some of you did with a deployed spouse, trying to find a job in childcare, finishing your education, a partner of a child or a child with disabilities, multiple moves and having no one in your family or a friend group nearby to help you when you just needed to get a haircut and run a few errands. Life becomes very challenging very quickly for our young families and you just feel like you're treading water. Our organization was created with the lens of prevention for all children as young as possible because of the wiring of the brain and the timeline for those connections to form. I recall when my husband and I were pregnant with our daughter, who will turn 24 this week. I had worked in child welfare and adoptions and foster care for a number of years and so I thought I needed to educate myself a little bit further and I picked up this book called How to Have a Smarter Baby. And I began reading about connections in the brain and the timetable of those connections. Early experiences affect the development of brain architecture, which provides the foundation for all future learning, behavior and health. Just as a weak foundation compromises the quality and strength of a house, adverse experiences compromise the quality and they have negative impacts for the rest of a child's life. As scientists continue to learn about the brain, understanding about how it develops continues to evolve. Recent research suggests that the number of new neural connections forming in the early years of life has been grossly underestimated. Rather than 700 connections per second, scientists now agree that it is more than 1 million new connections per second in the developing child's brain. Literally, if the wiring doesn't happen when biology hasn't scheduled to happen, we pay the rest of our lives in one way or another. The first 2,000 days of life are key to what happens. I realized with the children in my caseload that the abuse and neglect that they had faced had forever altered the capacity of their brain. It doesn't mean that a person cannot live a healthy life, but it does mean that there must be intervention and extra supports to achieve that. Fast forward to my work as a therapist and understanding from a more complex lens the impact of trauma on the brain, you do not just get over what happens to you as a child if it has been traumatic. The sadder piece is that it's 100% preventable as Dr. Woodruff mentioned already and we have to be very intentional about helping our young families to manage their own stress and to help them see what's possible in their lives. We live in a very complex society. We all know how the world has sped up with just the invention of the iPhone. The pressures are just different with the equivalent of over 100 large newspapers coming at our brains daily. Our brains just weren't built for sometimes the society that we live in and we all have to be proactive. Our goal must be a strong foundation in these early years for long-term social and emotional health, which is equivalent to good mental health. Our lane as the partnership for children in this fight is to ensure that all children reach their fullest potential abuse-free. It's actually why I came to a startup nonprofit over 20 years ago. We offer early literacy work, parent enrichment services, and support for classroom teachers in childcare. This is our unique position of service in this community and what a community to have this capacity, given that we are the youngest in the country and we serve the military What we know from our numbers is that we have a problem with child abuse in this community. Due to the amount of incidents, the need was created for a child advocacy center to exist here in Onslow County. Before our child advocacy center existed, children and their families would have to travel an hour and 45 minutes to Greenville to the Teddy Bear Child Advocacy Center. You can only imagine the stress it's created for the family, even more for the child. Not to mention the time and cost it was for law enforcement, Department of Social Services staff, and perhaps guardian of the litum who are needed to help determine what has happened to a child. After many years of community partners, all committed to help solve a problem, finally in 2007, our agency was asked to house our community child advocacy center under our umbrella organization. The decision to have this service live with us was because we are a neutral entity in the process of child abuse cases. We are not directly connected to law enforcement or to the Department of Social Services. We were honored then and remain up to the challenge that surrounds coordinating this much-needed service because one child hurt is too many. What a child advocacy center does is it focuses on the child. We take great care to not re-traumatize the child by having the goal that the child only has to tell their story once. We remove barriers to investigation and treatment by ensuring the child is the center of the multidisciplinary approach as shown above. As you can see in the diagram, the child is in the core of the service and all of the other multidisciplines work in collaboration for the child. Evidence is gathered to enhance criminal prosecution and justice for the offender. All of this to be able to do the most important thing of all, begin the hope and healing process for the child. As of today, today, the Child Advocacy Center of Onslow County has coordinated services for 2,238 children. Yes, I know that number is alarming and that number is only a fraction of child abuse cases in our community. One child hurt is too many. In August 2010, the first day we opened the doors of the Child Advocacy Center, I remember Chief Yanaro saying, "The best day will be when we can close the doors of the CAC." Sadly, our community has much more work to do. We must have more awareness and education around this 100% preventable public health issue. We cannot bear to wake up to one more child being hurt or even more devastated dying. As a community, we must commit to helping those who need it the most, those who are not able to help themselves, because children are no small matter and one child hurt is too many. Thank you.
I'd like to just kind of follow up on just a couple of points. First is that as your police chief, one of the things I think is extremely important is the community policing process and we've had a number of different discussions about the community policing process and how that relates to different kinds of things, health issues, violent crime rate, all those things. We've been very effective in dealing with our violent crime rate, but stubborn problems, stubborn problems that continue to plague our community still occur. And if we're going to be proactive, then we're going to have to look at things a little bit different than we've been doing over the last several years. And what alarms me is when I look at the statistics from 2012 to 2017, we saw a 58% increase in child victimization rate in our community. I mean, and those are things anywhere from child abuse to child neglect to also murder in our community. So if we're going to be very effective, we're going to have to change the way we do things and that means investing in our children. The Child Advocacy Center is a way that we can restore the innocence that's been taken from these children and make them whole again. And it needs to continue and it needs to increase and it needs to expand. And the same with the early childhood programs. I talked to colleagues across the country that deal with diverse communities and what I see in the most successful police agencies is the fact that they are working with groups like the partnership to improve the quality of services for those children. So what I've heard and what I've read is that for every dollar we spend today, we save $3. And that makes a lot of sense to me, given the cost of the investigation, given the cost of incarceration, given the cost of all those things that come from crimes that occur from people in our community. So as your police chief, one of the things I think that we really need to discuss, we've talked about the child abuse prevention plan, but it's also improving those services to children because I think that can have some significant impact in our crime rate today, our crime rate tomorrow, and in the crime rate in the future. As these children grow up and become responsible citizens, that's what we want to happen. And in order to do that, we're going to have to invest more in our children, especially with the fact that our average age has reduced. So I think this conversation needs to continue and we need to look at things that we can do to improve the lives of the children because it's going to have an impact further down the road.
Many people in the audience are aware of where your facilities are located. There are also many people watching on G10 this evening. Could you give a quick overview of where your facilities are located here in the community?
Sure. Our organization is located at 900 Dennis Road, which is towards the end of Western Extension. A marker for us is always the Marine Federal and the State Employees Credit Union. And our offices are tucked away and located in the Great Business Park.
Generally, where do you get your financing?
Sure. So we have, as I mentioned in the beginning, you know, we were established in order to have sort of a public investment as well as private investment. And so a lot of, the majority of our funding is still based on state and federal funding. However, we do have grants from foundations and private sources as well.
One of the things that the staff has been working with the partnership leadership, partnership leadership, that's too many ships, chief. The partnership is currently spread over a variety of rental spaces. And when you start as an organization, it's pretty easy to start in one location. But then as you expand to the service level that this very successful and needed operation has grown to, they're going to be looking in the next year or further at the possibility of building a new facility. And I think it's important for us as a city, they're certainly not asking us for funding, but it is important for us as individuals in the city to know that this is something that helps us build a strong community. It helps show the care that we really truly talk about every day but need to live every day and that is caring for each other. And the mayor's one-city campaign fits right into this. Everything that Dawn and her staff do every day is about a caring community. It's about one-city development and as the chief has said, it has a direct impact on us as an organization. At this time, questions that you may have of this group?
Dawn, you still, you work a lot with the base too, don't you? You have a lot of military dependence.
Yes.
How many, just rough estimate, how many kids do you see a week or so?
Sure. Well, depending on the service area, so we, you know, we administer things like the North Carolina preschool program where we help serve over close to 743, I think is the last number. We provide literacy services to over 12,000 children currently. Within our childcare system, we provide services to all of those 3,700 and of course, as Anne said, with the Child Advocacy Center in particular, with our current location and spacing and also medical providers, we can see as many as three cases a day. On average, we've seen around 250 to 300 of those children's cases every year.
I must say that you and your organization are a great asset to this community. It's a shame it wasn't, it's only been in operation for 20 years. I mean, you know, it took that long to get an organization that could take care or at least, you know, try to drive a wedge in this problem here. You know, I commend you and your staff on what you do over there.
Well, thank you. We've always appreciated the partnership with the city and I think from, of course, having conversations around mental health issues to child abuse issues, this governing body has always been very much about the citizens and human services needs in our community. And I think all of us are very aware of what it takes within our own lives and certainly within those we serve and as employers. Mental health is a key issue and it starts from the beginning. And we know that in particular, while we can't serve all children, we know that there are tremendous needs for the children that we see in the Child Advocacy Center for mental health services that don't fit a traditional model of a therapy practice. And so we know that in the coming months, we've got to begin to serve children within mental health. We've got, there's just, there's always work to do that sort of keeps us up at night.
Are you trying to consolidate all your operations under one roof? Is that the goal or?
It would be good. Our main goal really is to have a space that I always say, we're in our 22nd year now and it would be good to actually have a home that we're not, you know, that we're not paying rent for. I mean, I think that's the piece when we look at being good stewards of money and looking towards our future and what's sustainable past us, we know that we need to have a permanent location. Not only for what we can do within the walls, but also we need spaces where we have, I remember Anne sharing with our board a story of a child who had been seen within the Child Advocacy Center and you're telling very personal things about your, about what has happened to you and the child just needed to breathe. And we just don't have good outdoor space where a child can even walk outside and get air.
I have a few questions. First, thank you for the work you do.
No, thank you.
Because I know it's needed in our community. But what's the difference between the amount of military like percentage-wise and civilian in your programs that you serve?
You know, that's always a good question. And in fact, we were talking about it earlier today. By our estimates, at least 50% of all that we serve are military. Of course, that can ebb and flow depending on the program, but overall, understand that our services were always established for all children. And so it's not a determining factor. Some programs have different eligibility pieces to them, but 50% is the number that we're comfortable giving and we don't feel that's overinflated.
Also with the programs that you have and between those programs and the child advocacy centers, do you have a way of rerouting possibly parents? You seeing issues as it's coming along to actually be, you know, to connect those with other resources?
Yes.
To try to prevent them actually ending on the child advocacy side?
That's the first goal. The first goal is always, even within the classrooms that we have of a child is in a licensed childcare facility, we're helping those teachers to be trained to connect those families with resources, not only for themselves who have young children a lot of times in that workforce, but that they are able to be that connector. I mean, I, you know, anyone who has had a child and has sought out childcare in their life, you know that that teacher actually becomes sort of a co-parent in a lot of ways. And so they have the best availability, if you will, to interface with that parent and spot if something is off or something needs to happen or if there's a resource that they can be connected to.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Dawn, first, thank you, it was a great report. Can you talk about your preschool program real briefly? What sort of program? Is it educational or is it just childcare? Is it a combination?
Sure.
What's the goal there?
Sure. So we were a part of, if you remember, there's a case, the Leandro case, and it was about North Carolina's ability to serve outworked children. And North Carolina's preschool program started as More at Four under the Easley administration. And we became the administrator of that, Onslow County Schools. We, they were working in partnership with us and then we became the administrator of that program several years ago. That program has specific requirements of eligibility for children that we serve, but also those teachers must be birth-to-kay licensed teachers or the K-5 certifications. There's lots of different licensure pieces. I'm not the best person to ask. But those, they have specific curriculum and they're looking at the social and emotional well-being of the children first and foremost. Again, we also recognize that four-year-olds is sometimes, you know, there's a lot of things that have already happened in a child's life that may need remediation. So we have actually brought early head start to the community. We've just expanded and we have early head start slots within childcare facilities now. We have 42. We're trying to get that right and then we'll scale up from there because we know there's a need. These are families that are low-income families. And then we also have connected a program, we developed three schools because we needed to provide a bridge gap for if we could provide a child a service at age zero, we need to be able to see them all the way to the public school system. So does that answer your question? But all licensed teachers and quality.
With all license with a program?
Yes.
A curriculum-based?
Yes, and a curriculum through the Department of Public Instruction.
Okay. And the last question is, what is your biggest need currently as an organization outside of the facility?
Outside of the facility? We need to be able to, you know, I think everyone is always looking to sustainability in the future, knowing that our population continues to be lower. So how can we continue to evolve and shift? Our biggest need outside of a facility, and of course, everyone would like more private funding and other funding, is mental health services for children. We need to be able to provide trauma-informed care to those children. And I always say that when you're serving children as a therapist, it takes a little bit of a different lens. It takes a little bit of a different office setup. It takes a little bit of a different skill. You cannot see patients back-to-back generally, especially when trauma is informed and the family has to be informed. So it takes a really different setup and we're trying every different way. If you walk in our building right now, it looks better today, but last week it looked like something blew up. But we're trying to carve out spaces so how can we provide services that are confidential for these families that already there is trauma because we have the connection already to them. So we need more space.
Space is your biggest challenge.
Space, but to provide the service.
Thank you. Before we close, any other questions from the council?
I was going to ask the chief, the trend that you mentioned from 12 to 17, is that reflective overall nationally or have you looked at other areas? I mean, we above, below?
Well, I think, I think in a lot of different communities, the trend is going up. And I think a lot of that has to do with, a lot of it has to do with opioids, a lot of it has to do with methamphetamine, a lot of it has to do with drugs and genomics. And I think, I think the opioid issue has compounded it, especially the child neglect cases. I mean, I know that we've, that we've been involved in a number of cases that resulted in criminal charges for child neglect because of opioids and overdoses and things like that. So I think as long as we're struggling with opioids and now that opioids are at least to some extent leveling off, I think we're starting to see methamphetamine come back. So I think we're going to continue to see that trend. It's something that we really do need to reverse. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you have board members here you'd like to introduce?
I do, I do. Obviously, Chief Yanaro has served on our board and been a part of our committees. Joel Churchwell, I think many of you are familiar with him. He is in our audience. I also saw Michael Brown, who is here with us. Bill Keller is also a member. I think I've gotten everyone.
Actually, you have one lady that you can't see.
Nope. So my staff that are with me is, I have Stacy Knox, who is here, also Buffy Farmer is here with us as well. So they're also on our staff. I think I've got everyone.
Well, thank you very much for coming and giving us that presentation tonight. It was very enlightening too about what your organization is doing and what your needs are.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next item we have is the city code modifications for the wrecker regulations in the rotation list for towing.
Appreciate the opportunity to talk with you about this. The history of the wrecker rotation and the cities involved in regulating it goes back to 1980. The first city regulations were established and they required that if you're going to be on the rotation list, you must be in the city. Well, what is the rotation list? When the police department has a matter that involves a vehicle and the vehicle needs to be towed because it was in an accident or something of that nature and it, the police department does not have a, a person there who says, "I want to go to Joe's Towing", then it goes on the rotation list. To get on the list, there are certain requirements that are established in the city code and we're going to review those in a minute. The original rotation requirement was you had to be in the city. In 1986, it was changed. So you had to be in the city or in the ETJ. And 1998 was the next change. And what it said was that the maximum number of places that one company could operate from is four. And then in 1999, or since 1999, there have been absolutely no changes to the code at all. So we've been over 20 years with this operation. The city code and the JPD policies. Again, the city code says you must either be in the city or in the ETJ, limited to four locations, must be able to respond within 30 minutes and you must be available 24 hours a day. The issues really fall into this area. Several companies have been removed from the list because of things beyond their control. We've had ETJ reductions that have taken a business that was in the ETJ, no longer in the ETJ. We've had DOT right-of-way purchases that actually, because of pending projects, have forced one company to leave its location in the ETJ because the right-of-way is being purchased and that business can't be there. We have limited zoning and the UDO regulations, which I think are very appropriate, state that if you're going to be a wrecker company and storage lot in the city, then you have to look good. We don't want you looking like if you're parting expression in a junkyard in the city. The rotation, the rotation list has 22 entries on the list, but actually only 12 companies. Because remember the four rule. We have two companies that have four locations. We have two companies that have three locations. And we have eight companies with one location. So if you do the math, which Gail is in the audience and I hope she will verify, that if you look at two times four and two times three and eight times one, it comes up to 22 entries. But in reality, we're dealing with 12 companies. The JPD rotation list is for non-consensual tows for accidents within the city. It's not for tows in the ETJ. It's not for tows in the county. They have their own regulations. It's for tows within the city. Or if the owner does not state a preference. So what it really means is two cars collide, JPD shows up, the people involved in the accident just simply say, "We have no preference" and it needs to be towed. So the rotation list is activated. The towing data, amazingly enough, we have about 1,000 non-consensual tows a year. That's a lot. And guess where they are? They're all over the city. But the chief produced a, a hot map, as it was sent to me and called, and the hotspot's Western Boulevard. It doesn't matter whether you're on the 24 end of Western Boulevard or the gumbrage end of Western Boulevard. That's where the majority of the calls come from. The UDO regulations state that towing companies are permitted use in the industrial district. I would remind you, we have very little property zoned industrial. But as a permitted use, you could set one up and then you still have to meet the screening and landscaping and so forth. It's a special use permit in the corridor commercial, which basically, if you think of all of our major roadways, that's corridor commercial. Special use permit means you have to come through public hearings. And I think you would agree with me. A lot of our corridor commercial, we really don't want to see a wrecker storage yard. It just doesn't give the image that I think you and the staff are trying to create and successfully creating in Jacksonville. The UDO adds additional standards for buffering and setbacks. And of course, we have, as I said before, limited industrial zoning. What do other jurisdictions do? Well, we hold a number of them, the police department did, inside the city or 30-minute response times. New Bern, Greenville, Raleigh and Wilmington all say it has to be inside the city or a 30-minute response time. Morehead City says it has to be inside the city or a 20-minute response time. You notice the word ETJ is not found. Other jurisdictions, Goldborough says inside city or 1.5 miles from the city limits. Again, they don't use the word ETJ. There are a number of agencies that have a 25-minute response time. Craven County and the North Carolina Highway Patrol being two. The options that we'd like for you to think about, and we're not asking you to make a decision tonight, but we do need to address this one way or the other. One option is simply no change. You're either inside the city limits or the ETJ. Another is to say it's a response time standard, not a location standard. And you can set any time you want to, 20 minutes, 15 minutes, 30 minutes. I put up here, response time only, 30 minutes, no location requirement. Another is to set a distance. That you can be in the city or you can be five miles out, 10 miles out, 15 miles out. What we don't want is a person to have to drive all the way to Pender County to pick up the car. And then there's anything else that you want. From a manager recommendation, I look at this from what I'm going to consider a reality. I think the current code has served you well, but I think for reasons I'm going to show you in a minute, it's time for us to seriously consider changing the standard. JPD, in addition to the city code, says what? If you're on the rotation list and we call you, you have to be here in 30 minutes. Now, it doesn't matter whether you're in the ETJ or whether you're in the city. You got to be there in 30 minutes. If you're not, we rotate to the next rotation list customer. So one thought that I have is change it so it's a response time of 30 minutes, not a new location. Why would I recommend that? Well, here's my thought. It's currently the standard in JPD. Secondly, response time is the key on the goal, not location. We're going to see over the years continued reductions in ETJs. And the UDO limits the zoning. And the other is a matter of equity. Let's talk about equity in a minute. We have a company that lost its location due to DOT right-of-way. They have another location that's not in the ETJ. They're directly across Burgal Highway from a company that's not in the ETJ but is on the rotation list because somehow they were grandfathered in. At the end of the day, again, I'm not sure what the solution is. What I do know is that with 1,000 accidents a month, or a year rather, fortunately it's not a month, 1,000 accidents a year, there's a need for this operation. What we also know is you're currently dealing with, what was the number? 12 actual companies?
Yes.
And we also know that due to actions by the city government to reduce the ETJ, the DOT to buy right-of-way, companies that have served us well are no longer able to serve us well. And again, we have one company that no longer can serve us even though their location is directly across Burgal Highway, from a company that's grandfathered in and has to travel the same distance that they would.
And this is as a result of the reductions?
It's, and in that particular case, it's a result of DOT right-of-way purchase. There's another company that was located, what's the road where the Mr. Cox?
The road that goes into Walmart?
No, the, the road that goes into the county park down there.
Onslow Pines.
Onslow Pines. That's a location that is no longer eligible because we reduced the ETJ there.
And did we lose somebody that was there?
We lost his operation there. And what he's currently doing is renting a space in the ETJ with another wrecker company.
I got, I got a question here to the chief. We have the PD requirements, 30 minutes for response time. But that's based on, how does that, how does that affect with your operations, 30 minutes?
30 minutes.
I'm thinking 30 minutes is the right good.
Yeah, and, and we, we, we hold them to that. If they don't, if they don't come up, then, then obviously we'll take them off the list. I believe it's, I believe our policy says if, if they don't respond three times within 30 minutes, then we move them from the list. But the, the policy that we have is for two things. One is obviously the response time because we want to get the, the traffic cleared as quickly as we can and then get the officer back in service. And the other is because we don't want our citizens to have to drive all the way to Burgal or, or, you know, a long distance. If they, if they, if their car's in an accident and they have to pick their car up or it's towed for, for anything that's non-consensual. So that was, those are the two things that concern us the most. And those are the two things that generate complaints either internally or externally. You know, I had to go to this far to, to pick up my vehicle. Why did I have to do that and those kinds of things?
Now, with the requirement that they be within the ETJ, at least within the ETJ now, that 30 minutes is greatly reduced compared to what it could be if they were, say, in Sneets Ferry or somewhere like that. Would that affect you operationally?
It could affect us operationally. I mean, we're obviously, if, if the code changes and we, and we extend it, because we have removed companies who, who had, who had the same thing. Majestic is one of them that was, that was located in the ETJ when the, when Pine Green Road was built. We removed them off the, off the list because their, their company is now outside the ETJ. So there's, there's, there, there are some that I think if, if we go to a 30-minute response time and that it doesn't matter to us, we'll do the inspection. This is going to increase the number of wrecker services that are on our list. Currently, we have the 12. It could increase, it could increase it significantly, making us have to do more inspections and, and obviously track more companies.
Response time is my biggest concern because I, you know, I know that on Western Boulevard, for instance, where you're saying most of the accidents occur, shutting down Western Boulevard for 30 minutes could be a monster of a problem.
You know, Mayor, you are right. Response time, I think, is the key. When you think of the ETJ, it is not, it is not equidistant from any particular point. I mean, let's take, for example, the epicenter at 17 and West Street. We know from the, from the hot map that the chief provided, that's where most of the accidents occur. Well, if you think about that from your recent discussions with Ryan regarding ETJ reduction, one side of town, the ETJ goes pretty far out. The other side of town, it's right at the city limits line. So it's a, it's a, it's a standard that I have a difficult time saying is any longer valid. And it would be valid if it had a tax benefit to the city, but we no longer have the business license or privilege license. But it, again, it comes down to what I think, and the chief has said it, the key, and Mayor, you've said it from your experience, it's about response time. Now, whether 30 minutes is the right response time or not, the real question is, do you want to keep this the way it is as city limits or ETJ and/or ETJ, or do you want to go to a different standard?
I totally agree with you on the ETJ situation there and the distance. I'm just, you know, I guess the main thing is, you know, to measure, make sure we keep checking and measuring this to make sure this is a situation that can get out of hand, you know, later on. You know, because if we do change it accordingly, then, you know, we'll probably be back in here if it doesn't work out. Looking at it again.
I had a question in regards to your earlier slides. What do you think the intent is of these other communities that are doing just city-only?
I think that there's twofold reason for the, for that. One was the response time. If the company is located, you know, within their city or within their ETJ, they should be able to respond quicker, you know. Maximum is 30 minutes. You know, if you go through traffic and you have to get from one side of the city to the other, 30 minutes is, is, you know, could be just about, you know. And what we see is, it's, it's basically a 20 to 30-minute response time from the time that we call them. And the second is, I think that, that they are concerned about their citizens having to drive and extend a different distance to get their vehicles. You know, if they're not, if they're, if they're, if they have to go to some other place, you know, then, then I think those are the reasons that those other communities are, are like that, that they have it either inside the city or within 30 minutes.
Which makes sense because if someone's out too far, even though they can meet the response times, it puts a burden on that particular citizen to have to go get their car, which in turn adds up on a daily rate because they, every day they sit there, it's a higher rate. And so I would definitely think that we need to at least look at a limit of expansion.
I think, I think probably the time is probably the best measure, probably. Looking at response times.
We're talking about accidents just within the city limits?
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, the county or the state highway patrol take jurisdiction?
Yes, sir. And as I think one of the slides shows, we did not, we were not able to get a time from the sheriff's department here in Onslow, but the highway patrol says 20-minute response time is the time they call.
And they, they do it county-wide or district-wide? The highway patrol does. Now, the Craven County and the other counties that I'm, that I'm aware of mostly do it county-wide as well.
I'd probably favor the 25 just to be.
There's no public discussion.
Compliance with the highway patrol, the, you know, North Carolina Highway Patrol. And also, you know, I don't want somebody from Sneets Ferry being able to come in and tow back to Jacksonville. So if you've got an accident on, on one side of town, on the, on the air station side of town, you could have somebody being able to respond from Sneets Ferry, which I think is, you know, it goes against what we're talking about, have, make our citizens drive too far. So are we looking for a, are we looking for a motion of some sort?
No, sir. What I was hoping tonight is that we would open the discussion. I, I don't think that this is, I don't think that this is something that has to be answered today. But I do believe that there is an issue here that should be addressed and we wanted to bring to you the information which has been, which has been provided.
I have some questions. A couple, I guess. The companies, you say, I don't think of many. Are there many just exclusively towing companies or not? Are they associated like with a wrecker?
Body shop.
A body shop? I remember Dr. used to be on the rotation, I mean, those type of stations.
And I think there are a few that just strictly do towing.
And the location, when you call location, that's where the vehicle will be taken to? Or is it just where their phone rings?
Well, there's two things that happen. First is, is if, if you call and you request a particular wrecker, then they can tow it anywhere they want. You know, if, if my car's in a wreck and I call Wreck-A-Ray, I can have them tow it to, to wherever I'd like.
Right.
So that, those, those are not the ones that we're talking about. If somebody is injured or they're arrested or there's, they have no idea what to do, those are the ones that we, that we monitor the locations. Those are the ones that are on our list. So if, if they call, then we expect. So if, if they call, then we expect them to tow it to whatever that particular location is, and it has to be within, in that particular area. So does that make sense?
Somewhat, yeah.
The, the location doesn't have to do. There, there are some other requirements that require them to have a, a business location and be able to answer a phone twenty-four hours a day. There's some other requirements about being able to, to, to pick up their vehicle at a certain, certain time and how, how we'll charge them for storage fees. So all those things are obliga, are, are set out in our policy and within the city code to make sure that, that, that we're treating everyone as fair as possible.
How, if, if we were to go to, if we were to expand that to, say, that thirty-minute time limit, how many more entries would that probably make?
Well, Mayor, I'm going to answer that this way. You don't know that number of entries because what the ETJ currently does and the city boundary is it sets a physical boundary and unless you can find a location within that boundary. If you think of the Burgal Highway, the current ETJ and city limits is for all practical purposes right there at the bypass and fifty-three and so forth. From there, all the way down to James Towing, which is, pick a number, five or six miles, I haven't driven that really, at least I don't know the distance, but let's say it's five or six miles. As, any number of new companies could come in. So it, it's difficult to say, any of us who wanted to be in the towing business, you know, right now, our difficulty is inside the city, you can hardly find a place. And even in the ETJ, you can hardly find a place. But if you open it up to a distance, then suddenly going up Burgal, I'm sorry, going up Gum Branch from Western and Gum Branch, you could be up there fairly far for a thirty-minute response. Going down Burgal Highway, you could be, I mean, it, it opens it up where, yes, a number of competing companies who couldn't compete today could in fact compete. I don't know how you quantify that, though.
We still, we still have a, a towing firm that's contracted by PD.
Well, it's contracted by the city. Does all the, the towing for the city. It does it citywide.
That we do that by contract, fleet does that.
So that any, say like, for instance, you stop a vehicle and get drugs out of it or whatever, you're going to impound that vehicle, that's who you would call, right? You wouldn't use a rotation?
Not anymore because, because we have the facility. We'll, we'll use a wrecker, they'll tow it directly to the facility with an officer with it, and then we'll put it in our garage and then that wrecker will be called when it's, when we finish processing it and then return to the wrecker yard and then wrecker yard takes care of the bill.
Yeah, the company that we have under contract currently tows just city vehicles. So for example, if we have a transit bus that breaks down, we have a garbage truck that breaks down, needs to be towed, then we have a contract with that company to tow it. What we'd appreciate is some thought over the next several weeks as to what, what your direction should be. Mr. Attorney?
Just a couple of points. First one is, as you've heard the manager say, you have one company that's been grandfathered in, this, out on the Burgal Highway, and it's a significant distance on the Burgal Highway. So as you contemplate what you are going to do on this, be very careful because there's certainly an argument that once you open it up, if you do thirty minutes and et cetera, wherever, thirty minutes, you know, you're talking about thirty minutes for a particular wreck. So the wreck could be at the, down at the end of Highway seventeen at the city or whatever. You've got the, those kind of issues. I've always been an advocate for a point in the city and so much of a mile if you just do a circle or something, so you'd know where these folks are contained. But again, one thing is to consider is, uh, when, when you make a decision and you, if you make a decision to change the code, you're going to be grandfathering in possibly some folks that you may later say, I wish I hadn't done that. Like we talked about, the, you know, that, you know, that once the code is changed, they could say, well, you know, I have that kind of grandfathered in because y'all allowed this and now you want to reduce it, but still you should allow me, just like Mr. James's place on Burgal Highway. The other point would be, there's another element there, and the chief may be able to address this, but you can't drive many places that you don't see the sign. Hook them and lock them up and so forth. So there's a new element of wreckers out there. And, and I, I don't know what, how that plays into this, but you, you've seen this, it's right across the street here, there's a sign, if you park here on this lot and you don't have my permission, then, you know, we're going to tow you away. We don't have to give you any notice or whatever. That sign is a notice and it's special, not special, but there's clearly legislation in North Carolina that allows that. But Chief, I would.
And, and, and we, we worked with the code a number of years ago to talk about those as, as non-consensual tows. Because if you come out and, and you're, and you're at a certain location and somebody tows your car, non-consensual, then, then it needs to meet certain guidelines and those are spelled out in the code as well. So you are right, there are some other, besides that nine hundred and eighty-nine, there are some other, um, there are some other wreckers that we do regulate that don't pertain to the, to the thirty minutes because they are related to that.
But that's also caused a proliferation of wrecker.
That's true.
And you add fifty wrecker companies in the city, now you may have seventy-five. I believe that there's a, certainly an increase because of those, the, the law that changed and allows that kind of, where a private citizen or business can put that sign on their property and call or get an agreement with different companies and have it towed. You don't have to be within a certain distance to do that, I don't believe, unless.
There, there's a certain, there's a certain amount of regulations about, about how far you can be to tow those vehicles and those kinds of things on non-consensual tows.
Refresh my memory here, is, in the fee schedule, was there a fee for being on the rotation system?
Yes, there is.
There is. What is that fee?
We'll have to find that for you.
I think, I think it's, I believe it's two hundred and fifty dollars per wrecker. I think it is.
Can you clarify how the entity that's grandfathered, became grandfathered?
As I understand it, as the manager pointed out prior to nineteen eighty, there were, was no regulations and they were allowed to do it. And so they've been doing it since then under a grandfather clause. Is that the premise?
To be, I guess the best way to answer it is, we've looked through city files and we have looked through police files and we really can't answer that question. Although we can say is, they're on the list and they're way outside the ETJ.
But, but they still have to comply with thirty minutes.
Yes, sir.
And so if we keep it at thirty minutes, we shouldn't be changing anything. We're not changing the requirements other than we're just doing away with some. We're still keeping that thirty-minute time limit that, that keeps you on the rotation. If you violate that thirty minutes, you don't make it three times, you're off regardless of where you're at. So, so that, that's a good argument for the thirty minutes so that we don't get into problems with grandfathered folks because we're not changing the rec, that, that, that's the, really the main criteria.
Appreciate any thought and wisdom you can shed on this issue.
I'm just throwing something out there. I was wondering, kind of based on what you were saying, is, uh, kind of breaking the city into quadrants, that might deal with an issue of equity, but it would increase response time.
And, and that could easily be done within our CAD system so that you could theoretically say, certain wreckers are in this area, certain wreckers are in this area, when an accident comes up, it would, it would be in those particular areas. So computerized, we can do that.
Well, probably the three areas are going to be radius, time, and fees. And the reason I say fees is because you have businesses in the city that are paying city taxes and maybe there has to be an adjustment in the fee schedule if you're outside that city limit in order to participate and meet that time, you know, which is fine and I don't think anybody would object to that. So that there is a distinct difference between being located in the city and not. So I, I mean, that's the discussion as I see it as the three areas, radius, fees, and time.
And Chief, far as you're concerned, that thirty minutes is a good time? You wouldn't want any lower?
I think, I think if we decide that we should consider maybe lower minutes, you know, I, I was looking at Morehead City, I know Morehead City's a little bit smaller than us, so maybe twenty to twenty-five minutes would be much more effective for us.
So, so is the, is that a, a state thing that they got there or is it just in Craven County at twenty-five miles?
It's just, there's no, there's no recommendations, that's just a decision that each municipality can make.
But relative to, to the highway patrol, whoops, I'm going the wrong way. Relative to the highway patrol.
That's a state, that's a state policy.
Twenty-five minutes.
Now, the, the argument about being in the city or outside the city, property taxes, two different things. Property taxes are for protection, fire and police protection of that business and other city services. The fee is strictly for an inspection and you're going to have the same inspection whether you're inside or outside. So I'm not sure that you want to make a distinction in regards to fees because of that, because you're talking apples and oranges in my opinion.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate it. Would you like to handle one additional item before your break or would you like to take a break?
Mark? We're, we're going to take a real quick break because I know, I know, I don't want to take up anybody's time, but it's already.
Okay, let's take a break.
Go through the tunnel, so let's. All right, we're back in session. Ron, would you please introduce the next topic?
Sure. It's a pleasure for me to introduce Mark Southern, the executive director of the Jacksonville Onslow Economic Development Corporation, of which, of course, the city's a member. And Mark's going to give us a quarterly update and answer any questions you might have on what's going on in, in Joe Ed. So, Mark?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I greatly appreciate you making time on your agenda for me. I also appreciate, as does my board of directors, the city's continued investment in Joe Ed. Perhaps most of all, I really appreciate the contribution of knowledge and experience that, that Councilman Gordon and Ron Massey bring to our board of directors. And they're infinitely engaged in our conversations and very, uh, important in conclusions that we come up with, with our, with our work program. Appreciate it greatly. I was here in August, I think, the last time and so I gave you kind of an intro to Joe Ed's different approach to the future and I don't know what I'm doing well, but anyway. So this vision you see here, provide comprehensive economic development leadership, was the outcome of a multi-month, about a four or five month strategic planning process. We appreciated Councilman Jackson joining us as a guest during that process, very, very active in, in contributing to that. But that vision statement is a sea change from anything Joe Ed's ever written or done in the last fifty years that it's been in existence. It, for fifty years, you could have come around and read the statement on the wall at our office and it said, "We create jobs and we promote investment and we do this through marketing and attraction, business retention and expansion and product development." That was good for about fifty years, but the, the world has changed so much since the Great Recession that that really does not get at economic development. And so for the rest of my six minutes, I want you to think of, just re-invert those words and think of what is a developed economy, alright? So if we're successful at economic development, we should have a developed economy. And the more successful we are, the more developed our economy. And that means diverse and complex and resilient and it basically, for my board of directors, boils down to prosperity. So we're going to always measure the outcomes of our investment of resources in our activities in terms of a three-legged prosperity stool. And that we measure by taking a look at our, the individual wealth of our residents, the health of our businesses, local businesses, and the tax base. So if it's not supporting the growth of one of those three legs of the stool, it's not developing the economy, okay? And I mentioned to you in August, not all job creation is worthy of celebration because it doesn't all end up in a developed economy. Not all investments support a developed economy. So we put an extra layer on it with that vision statement. But I had a conversation with one of my investors last winter, I mean, over a year ago, and I asked, "Why do you suppose this county doesn't have a unified economic development strategic plan so that the towns and the city and the county and the utilities and everybody's kind of pulling their wagons in the same general direction?" And the response to me was, "Well, why are you asking me? You're the economic developer around here." And so if you looked at my mission statement that was on the wall back then, it didn't talk about being the economic development strategic planner, right? So that really got my attention, that yes, the county doesn't have an economic development office, you guys don't, and our investors, none of them do, but they invest in us and count on us to be their economic developer. And it doesn't stop, I don't think, at jobs and investment and product development. So I'm going to share a couple of projects that we're working with on right now, but you need to, to know that it's non-traditional Joe Ed, it's not your grandfather's Joe Ed when you look at these things that I'm going to share with you tonight. The major tenants that came out of the workshops were, we want a Joe Ed that's adaptable, accountable, and versatile, okay? That means you can do more than one thing, you can, you can shift with the change in times and you're going to be accountable, good stewards of resources and offer a value proposition worthy of investment, okay? So accordingly, these act, these objectives at the bottom, everything we do this year and the next four years is going to fall under one of those broad overarching objectives. All right, so the first one I want to talk to you about is a goal, falls under economic development capacity building and it has to do with our talent pool. So I'm going to say talent pool about ten times here and I want you to know that when we say that in economic development terms, that means folks in the labor market that have bachelor's degrees or higher. So we have a goal to create five hundred high-paying professional jobs here in the next five years. We're going to, I'm going to come back in the next slide and talk more about the talent pool. Also want to talk about the negative impacts of low wages. But we have technology and trends that allow coworking and portable careers. Those, that technology, those trends are enabling us to look at this differently when it comes to low wages. We have a partnership that we've been working on since last summer with the Military Spouse Employment Partnership. That's actually an office, a functional office, it's well-funded within the, in the Pentagon. It's a Department of Defense-funded activity with an eye on helping military spouses with employment. Since they started that up about two thousand and four, four hundred and thirty-one major corporations across the country have joined into that partnership saying, "We have a preference for hiring not only veterans but military spouses, military spouses, and we support portable careers." Not all of them, folks necessarily working from home, but they're okay with them working remotely in a cowork space or a flex space or some, something like that. So we have started last year a focus group of military spouses and others, they're not all military spouses, but they are all from the talent pool and they all talk to us about underemployment, undercompensation, so forth, and so on, the consequences of being in a talent pool in a low-wage community. We have started a program that we're kicking off this month with NC Works. NC Works has built us a custom information technology architecture to support this project for us to protect the folks that are participating in it and help us connect our talent pool with the demand for that talent pool that's all over the country and in fact, the world, okay? So here's what we have. This is, this is why we have low wages. Our supply of talent by far exceeds greatly, it greatly exceeds the demand. So look at these numbers here. This is an economic development asset that's profound, okay? And if you follow the green line, go over the left, see the folks with bachelor's degrees? This is yesterday, I checked NC Works yesterday. We have thirty-three openings, job openings in this candidate require a bachelor's degree and I have sixteen hundred and seventy-four candidates. That means an employer has fifty-one to choose from in rough numbers. Now, they might not, they might require specific bachelor's degrees, but I just want to contrast it to the situation in Raleigh and in Charlotte and down in Wilmington, what they get to choose from. So what I'm saying is the demand is there, the supply is here. So as long as the community. So as long as, the community college one time posted, I asked David Heatherly about this, posted a job for a receptionist, he got, it was a minimum wage job. I don't even know what minimum wage is. I don't even want to know, but anyway.
Seven dollars in St. Louis, Dale.
Oh, Lord. Okay, so he got 84 applications, and 72 of them had bachelor's degrees, which wasn't a job requirement. So in that case, the wages are, you know, are going to stay, are going to stay very low. When you look at the master's degrees numbers, you've got 45 candidates per job opening, and when it comes to doctoral degrees, we've got 111 of them in this county, and we have one job opening. Okay? So that, so everybody with me on the spreadsheet? Okay? And by the way, those are JDs and MDs and specialized degrees. Here's how Military Spouse Employment Partnership works. You know, we call on USAA in San Antonio, Texas, and we say, "I see that your HR department's looking for 17 CPAs. I have 41 of them right here in Jacksonville that are working. They're all certified, they're all educated, they're good to go. How about we bring those San Antonio wages to Jacksonville?" And that's the deal. USAA supports it, and USA will pay for the office space for us to create that coworking space here, and the private sector will deliver that coworking space for you. All right. And just so, you've probably heard me say this before, there's a very high cost of low wages. And the first thing is, unlike the 1970s, when your donut hole was built here in the city and you brought in some, some, some assembly and manufacturing operations, that's not the deal anymore. The number-one quest for site selectors is skilled labor. And the skilled labor goes where the wages are higher, and all the companies know that. So actually now, having the sixth lowest wages in the state, which we do, folks won't even look at us. Okay? We don't even know we're being disqualified. But it's no secret that our private sector wages here are the sixth lowest in the, in the state. And they're detrimental to all three legs of that prosperity stool. They're very detrimental to the creation of individual wealth, they hold back our local businesses, which, which could have more money circulating in the local economy if the wages were higher, and of course, they have an impact on the tax base that's negative through reduced property values and retail sales. So the solution for this project is to bring metro wages from high-paying wage communities here. If we can't recruit the companies, it's okay. We can get the jobs. Okay? All right. This has to do with the creation of hubzone companies, and again, entrepreneurship is not something that Joe Ed has engaged in, ever. Okay? But it's all about bringing federal contracting dollars to Jacksonville. We have a, and the wages that come along with it. We have three economic development assets here. We have proximity to federal consumers. All right? And there are certain, there are certain products and services that, that are, can be made available cheaper because of proximity. Not all of them, but some of them. And for those that do apply, we aim to exploit that. We also have three hubzones in Onslow County, and we have mentors who have graduated from the, the program and can be, and can bring on proteges, they can sponsor proteges. So 3% of the federal contracting dollars are set aside for hubzones, so if you're qualified as a hubzone company and you compete for that bid, and you will have an edge in that bid, and won't get it in and out itself. But it's the goal of every federal agency, department, that 3% of their contracting dollars end up in hubzones. And I want to point out that you, not only does the company have to have their principal office in a hubzone, but 35% of their employees have to live in a hubzone. Okay? Don't have to live in the hubzone that the office is in, but it's in a hubzone. Okay? So for instance, all downtown New Bern is a hubzone, all of Jones County is a hubzone. But we have one here in Jacksonville, we actually have two in Jacksonville, one over on Henderson and one between Marine, La June, and Western, and then one in Hubert. Okay? Challenge with this goal is housing. It's a debilitating challenge, and it's a fatal weakness to us accompli, accomplishing that goal. So we can't, we can't even expand our existing hubzone businesses because of housing, much less grow a new one. So this is not something that you would have seen Joe Ed talking about, you know, a couple of years ago, but the board has taken a different track on his vision, and we absolutely have to work together, everybody in this, in this community, to, to come up, to attract the investment that's necessary to deal with that issue. And it's, it's not just a quantity issue, it's a variety issue, a variety of housing. I'll give you a good example. One of our hubzone companies is Melissa Leifite's Construction Company. And because she doesn't have enough housing options here, she hires people from out of state that happen to live in hubzones in other states, and they, they help her meet her requirement. So she has employees in several other states, and when you call her for a job interview, the question is, not what your degree's in, or not, you know, how many years of experience you have, is, "What's your address? Where does your house?" "Well, I live in Houston." No, "I need to know your address." And she puts it in her hubzone tracker, and it comes up, "Yes, that's in a hubzone. Okay, now we can talk." All right?
What do those folks do for her? What do they do?
Project management, document review, bid preparation, all sorts of things that can be done remotely. Of course, she would rather have.
It helps meet her, helps meet her hubzone contractual obligation.
Yes, sir.
To get those contracts.
Yes, sir, that's exactly right. So when she, she gets ready.
Projects.
She gets ready to submit a bid, she's got all the required stuff in there, and one of those is, I certify that as of this date, when I signed this, 35, 35 of, out of 100 employees live in a hubzone. And it's, it's audited fairly regularly, and, and it does what it's supposed to do, it's bringing capital into historically underutilized areas. So anyway, it's a big goal for Joe Ed, it's not anything we can do without addressing the housing challenges, so we're actively working with investment groups to deal with that. And I appreciate the time that the city staff has spent with me, getting me smart on opportunities around here in Penn. So thanks, fellas. Appreciate it very much. We have a goal to deal with leakage, and this is a big deal, because one of our stools is in prosperity, one of our legs in the prosperity stool is the tax base. And I know some people around here have seen me harp on this for several months, but I'm just going to keep on talking about it until I do something about it, or at least finish up our analysis of it. But everybody heard that we have the demand in this county for about 1.1 million flights a year, and only about 375,000 of those go out of OAJ. So I did some digging on that, and it turns out, we can look at that by zip code. So in the 28584 zip code, which is Swansboro, 86% of the time, a Swansboro resident in that zip code makes a decision to fly, it's out of an airport other than OAJ. Well, you'd think, all right, you're halfway between New Bern and Jacksonville. Actually, 74% of the people in 28540 in Jacksonville choose to fly out of a different airport. Now, there's all kinds of reasons that make all kinds of sense for doing that. But my point is, we should be looking at solutions to maybe capture 10% of that leakage. 10% would be a big number. All right? And the more we capture that leakage, the more flight options our residents will have in place, destinations. So that's one of those biggies. Entertainment and recreation, I'm, I put a plus on there. That's, that's anecdotal, but it's arrived at through some benchmarking that I've been doing for about a year with, with comparative communities to ours. I suspect it would be more than that, and I think I told Councilman Warden the other day, I would bet Sheila's paycheck, that it's over a half a million dollars, or a half a billion dollars of leakage. What I would like to do this year, what I intend to do, is, is, is finish up the analysis on that, so that it's a professional product, and we know what that is, and we know what the sources of it are, and, and the last page being so what, what are we going to do about getting after that leakage?
Mark, we had talked about that before, but with that, you said average age is 22 and a half, or something of that nature?
26 now.
22.
22.8.
In the city. I'm sorry, I was looking at the county.
Yeah, so it's like, and I know a lot of those are getting out of town, period.
Right.
You know, they reside here, but they live other places.
Right. So, so everybody has some sources of leakage, and, and don't get me wrong, we do have some areas where we have surpluses here, and those are good. They're not as, they're not as strong as they used to be because of the changing nature of retail. But I put this in terms of local revenue. So, you know, long before anybody needs to talk about raising taxes or whatever, I just think we need, as a community, take a really close look at how we can get a handle on a piece of this leakage. All right? So we went to, you know, I asked the office staff to buy from mom and pop office supply stores here in the county, and there are no more. All right? And not that there's only, there's just one office supply store, but most of the people have now gone to getting their stuff online. Okay? So, and this is one thing that, it's not necessarily leakage, but it's one of those things, things that is worthy of some analysis and some conversation, as to why, you know, we, we underperform in terms of tax savings per resident when it comes to tourism, given that we have so many employees working in that field, you know? And this is not conclusive, it's just one of those flags that comes up when we look at, at economic indicators, if we have a developed economy, if, you know, what sectors of our economy can we, can we focus on and, and develop to be in more? So I just throw that up there because it's one of those, it's a question.
Explain that a little bit more, it's, it's not clear, and I think mainly explain for the folks at home that might be watching this. What are you trying to show here?
So, so what I did is I took a look at the coastal counties. Now, the state publishes this once a year, and it has to do with the economic development impacts, or the economic impacts of tourism in general. And in their methodology, they say that, well, their methodology is simple. Here's the population of your county, here's the economic impact, here's the fiscal impact, different than economic, fiscal impact on government revenues and expenditures. And this, the, the tourism, the, the impact of tourism in Onslow County saves every man, woman, and child $107 a year in taxes that they don't have to pay.
Right. So tourism revenue brings in enough money to offset $107 of, of tax, taxes.
Right. Right, per resident.
Right.
So that's nice, except that, you know, everybody else is, is two times greater, you know, maybe except for Pender County there, but, and so my question is, why, why is that? All right? Why would we be, why would we be $107? You know? Don't know. But it's worth, it's one of those things where we need to look at. It's not necessarily leakage, but it's a, it looks to me like it's a, there's some untapped potential there. Okay? I don't know.
And, and so for the first time, you're seeing, you're seeing Joe Ed deciding that they, that they need to take an interest in tourism, and it's not just, just, you know, leave it all strictly to tourism folks, it's part of growing the capacity, economic capacity here in the county.
It should be every, every leader's interest in the county to know if that, can that be $150, right? That would be huge, you know? What would it take to get it to $200 in 10 years, you know? So we, we don't know exactly why, but I know that there are analysts out there that can help us get at that, and we are a partner with anybody that wants to be a partner on this sort of thing. I hesitated to call it leakage, I say that again, because we don't know if it's leakage. We don't know if it's because most of our coastline is either owned by the military or, or private homes, and we don't have a lot of rentals like some other counties. Don't know that. Okay? At any rate.
I think to clarify Mr. Warden's question, in the past, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the past, Joe Ed has primarily been interested in what I'm going to call industrial recruitment.
That's right.
And under the new guidelines, goals, the program that y'all have put together, it's no longer about just industrial recruitment. It's about a whole series of things that can build the community. So let's say, three years ago, if somebody wanted to do something that would benefit tourism, y'all would have said, "That's not us." Today, you're saying, "Yeah, if you want to bring an industry here, we're going to help you. If you want to do something that builds tourism, we're going to help you. If you want to do something else that does something that helps the community, we're going to help you." Your menu of responsibility, or your menu, your spectrum of targeted activities is now much broader than simply industry. Is that what we're saying?
Uh, yeah, we should go back to Slide 1 and let you rebrief Slide 1, but that's, that's, it's very accurate. I need to. You agree?
Yes. You put it very succinctly.
Thank you. So the last one, one I wanted to talk about was that, with regard to our, that second broad objective of establishing a good value proposition for our investors, is performance metrics that are appropriate for the kinds of things we're doing now. We, we have always measured how many requests for information we get, trade shows, we go out and promote the county, visits we make to existing industry, how we work on helping, you know, sites and buildings become available for industrial development. We get a lot of requests for technical assistance. And so we have always measured that thing, and at the end of the, and at the end of the year, when you went to a Joe Ed annual meeting in May, you saw it resulted in this many site visits, and this much, this many millions of dollars of new investment, and this many net new jobs. Right? But I want to reiterate, in our new plan, that does not equal prosperity. All right? And so since we're all about community prosperity now, and it's got a three-legged stool, we're much more interested in what we're doing to impact those community metrics. Right? Is this, is this economy developing? Yes, if, if our, if our wages are going up, if our tax base is healthy, if the property values are going up, and homeownership rates are going up, unemployment's going down, you know, and we get a handle on some balance to leakage and surplus. So we are following those community metrics, and we challenge the rest of the community to, let's all take a look at the, those that are most important to us, and is, what we're doing is a community conducive to showing success in those community metrics. Right? Joe Ed's going to always be showing the, you know, folks around town that are thinking about relocating here, we did existing industry visits today, and we're just going to keep on doing that, but I'm, there's a lot more hours in the day that we're dedicated to that, that miss, that vision statement, which is now the provision of comprehensive economic development leadership for the community. So Chairman's top priority, Susan Edwards, is to strengthen the Board of Directors, and she's on the road doing that. The board has decided that our funding ratio going forward will remain about 35% public, 65% private. That's both the funding and the membership on the Board of Directors. It's been 10 years since Joe Ed did a capital campaign, and we will later on this month be kicking off another one, and it's to raise 1.8 million dollars to fund the work program associated with this new strategic plan that'll take us to 2025. With that, do I have any questions?
Explain leakage a little bit.
Okay.
I, I hear it because I go to the economic development, but if you, if you're sitting at home, or maybe even some of these, some of these folks here, explain a little bit about leakage.
Okay.
Especially in regards to, the one that I, that I keep, you know, thinking about is, is grocery, retail sales. Why you look at that?
Okay, so Onslow County residents consume groceries, and, and the model, and the modeling we use to figure out what is that demand for groceries in Onslow County is Esri, the economic, or environmental systems research. So Esri says, and I'm going to just pull a number out of the air, okay? Esri says, "The people in Onslow County consume a billion dollars a year in groceries." All right? That's the demand. Okay? So the, the groceries that they're purchasing in Onslow County amount to $875 million. So that means $125 million a year worth of groceries are being consumed here, but they're being purchased in another jurisdiction.
And that's, and that's the definition of leakage?
The leakage. Now, surplus, on the other hand, if the demand here was a billion dollars worth of groceries and they bought one point two billion, we would have a two hundred million dollar surplus. And we do have a surplus in some things, in some retail sectors, uh, but, but it's, uh, and that's good, except the retail's changing, and we've really gotta be conscientious of the sales tax implications of changing retail habits. But, uh, we don't really know why a hundred and twenty-three million, I talked about this with you folks in, in August, don't really know why a hundred and twenty-three million dollars worth of groceries are purchased elsewhere, but, uh, we, we, we do know that there, it, it's, it's on the high end, it's on the high end of shopping, it's not on the low end of shopping. So we've done a little, we've, we've, we've got some more market intelligence since I was here in August.
Is that goods or just strictly groceries?
It's groceries, right? It's things that are sold at the grocery store, so when all the grocery store people do their receipts and they report, you know, the revenue, that's where the methodology is informed at Esri.
And so the negative impact then on Onslow County is, is what?
Well, the negative impact is, um, mainly the tax base, so when those hundred and twenty-three million dollars worth of groceries are purchased outside of the county, that equals something, it, uh, equals two point four million dollars in local sales taxes that weren't, that are not available to our local governments. So that's the negative impacts on the tax base. Uh, in terms of office supplies, it's a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, and leakage at OAA, I don't call it taxes, I don't call it taxes, it's revenue, so it's not just taxes, it's taxes and some fees associated with it. Same with the entertainment and recreation leakage, uh, which we're, which we're gonna be drilling down into this year a little deeper, but, uh, did that answer the question?
Yes, I have a question in regards to, we recently have been dropped to a tier one. Can you talk about that and talk about the impacts of that, if you see it, affecting economic development, the implications of it, or maybe an opportunity for it?
It's both, it's, it's kind of a, nothing to be proud of, really, to be demoted to tier one, uh, but we, uh, are in a position now to garner some resources that we otherwise wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have been available to us, and more importantly, without a local match, in most, in most cases without a local match. So when it comes to studying that leakage in entertainment and recreation on the slide there, uh, I don't expect to have to come up with a Joe Ed local match to do that consultant work, I expect to get it funded, uh, with no cost to our investors.
Mark, for the, for the public, tier one, tier two, who sets the tiers, what does it actually mean, what does it measure?
So there's a hundred counties, and the, uh, General Assembly long ago created a tier system, so, so if you can imagine a tier, a tier, uh, three county being on the wealthy end, based on growth, on unemployment, and on wages, right? The top twenty counties would be tier three counties, and they're-
Lincoln County, Mecklenburg, and so forth.
Yes, sir, right. So then there are tier two counties, which, as long as I've been working around here, Onslow County has been a tier two county, there's the next forty counties. So, uh, and it's based on the same criteria, wages, unemployment, and growth. Tier one is the forty at the bottom.
Poorer, poorer counties.
Right. So when it comes to setting, um, to earmarking assistance, if you're a tier one county, you're first in line, or you don't have to have a local match, or in some cases, the money's only available to tier one counties, right? So it's a group of forty, a group of forty, a group of twenty.
And the negative side of that is, when you're in the private sector and you're looking at locating a retail store, you look at the economics of the community, the demographics of the community, and part of what you look at is where are you, well, relative to wages paid, household incomes, values in the community? So your, your goal as a community like Jacksonville is to be a tier three. Why? Because a tier three is gonna bring you the very best in everything. As you probably know, a lot of the major retail stores have classifications of stores, it's not just one size target. So, in a poorer community, they may build a smaller retail store, and in a class three, they would build a very large one. For example, Michael LaCory's daughter's gonna be getting married.
Michael, is it okay if I announce that on public?
She wants to look for a bride.
Having a great big wedding.
Great big wedding.
Catered by, catered by.
Zara's Pizza. But if you want to buy a, what I'll call a higher-end wedding dress, it's difficult to buy that in Jacksonville. Why? Because of the buying power and so forth. So when the public listens to Mark and you talk about class one, class, or category one, category two, category three, it really has a direct impact on your daily life here. I mean, a Belk's department store here versus a Belk's department store in Raleigh.
In, in Raleigh.
Or in Maysville.
And guess what, there's more continued leakage because the residents here are spending money outside of the county, all of the advantages of that goes to those counties and not, not To Onslow County.
The reason I brought that up is I, I believe that that should be on your radar as part of, I know that this was done prior to that announcement, but I believe that that should be, even though there's opportunities, um, I, I think there's a lot more harm than good, and it should be on our radar, especially in economic development, to figure out how we can fix that, because being a tier one is nothing to be, especially proud of.
No.
And I, just an opinion, I think that, that should be on your-
And it's no secret why we got on there, because we're the sixth lowest wage metro in, in North Carolina, or lowest wage county, I'm not sure.
Well, we sit on the, I think if you look at the, the numbers, we, we sit on a fence, so to speak.
Between tier one and tier two.
Tier one and tier two.
We were, we were number forty-one last year.
Exactly.
Right.
So, I think part of a strategic plan, I think somehow that needs to be incorporated in, in trying to do some analysis to figure out how we fix that, because we certainly don't need to be a tier one community for any length of time. I don't think there's any good that can come of that long-term.
Right.
My opinion.
Yes, sir.
You were correct.
So our, uh, so at the beginning of last year, our average weekly wages here were seven hundred and seven dollars, and I tracked those numbers every week, and somewhere around June, they dropped to six hundred and seventy-five dollars, right? And then I said, whoa, what about real wages over time since the tax and jobs bill, you know, in Congress passed in twenty seventeen? And we actually, wages here went backwards. They not only went backwards in real wage terms, they went in real dollar terms backwards. That didn't help us now.
Now, why do you think that happened, though? Is it because more retail and the numbers got skewed? I mean, obviously wages don't typically go backwards unless you had loss.
Well, it was interesting because our unemployment rate started to go up then in the county too, and it was, and it was a point and a half higher than the state's unemployment rate, which is significant in a economy of full employment that we, that we enjoy now. Later on in the year, it became apparent that we had, we had a call center closed down, okay? So that's, that wasn't too resilient, that was a hundred and forty-two jobs, and then all the folks at Standodyne were, not all of them, but a lot of them were laid off because of the GM strike, and there was nothing left to do at the Standodyne plant because the place was full of fuel pumps and nobody taking them off their hands at that point. But, uh, I just got the numbers last week, it's back up to seven hundred and seven dollars, it's back up to seven hundred and five dollars. So, that's all it takes, I think, to your point, is, is, is an uptick in the weekly wages and a downtick in unemployment. And we'll be right back, number forty-one or forty-two, but that's still, it should be our goal, to, to Richard's point, to be a, to be a tier three county.
Does census impact that?
It does, it does, because growth is one of the factors, right? So, unemployment, wages, and growth, and our growth, uh, and I believe that Sharon Russell said in her conversations with Raleigh, it was the growth that was down, the others were minimal, but the growth rate was down, so that was-
She said unemployment. She said unemployment yesterday at the GAT.
It was up.
That, that, that was, that was probably the thing that drew us.
That our employment is up?
With, yes. And that may be consistent with what you were talking about, with, with Telladega or Standodyne and that, um, you know?
Even, even if they are temporary layoffs, they're still layoffs.
That's right.
They're in that snapshot of time that they, that they set the designations, so.
Yes, sir.
And the other question from Mark.
Mark, I was wondering, as we go forward, have you forecasted the possibility of how this could affect when the next BRAC comes around? Because I know they're considering other things like quality of life as they go forward, and the military is shrinking period in certain areas because of technology, so I was just wondering if it's something you have considered.
No, it's a good, good question, sir, but I, I have not, uh, and I don't have a, a BRAC slide.
Right.
Uh, it's, it's so hard to talk about BRAC because every BRAC we've had, all five of them, they had vastly different objectives, and so until you understand the objective of a particular BRAC, it, it's hard to know how to respond to it, and I know this, that i- if we want a, a developed economy, if we've done a good job at economic development, our economy will be increasingly resilient to things like that, and we won't, it won't be a doomsday scenario either way, and we won't have to be afraid of it, so.
I think one, one last comment, relative to, uh, Mr. Jackson's question, with the roughly two billion dollars that's gonna be spent at the base, that's going to have to meet all of the federal wage guidelines. So, you know, while we may be in tier one today, hopefully, when the base really cranks up with all its construction, and we have a lot of people getting employed who are currently here, and a lot of new people moving in here, and the wages are gonna be paid at the base, you're going to see that number go up. I would also remind us, though, that what goes up also goes down, because that construction period is a three-to-five-year period. Um, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark? Here are those documents, yes.
Oh, thank you very much.
Counsel, I know you've had a, a, a long evening already, usually we try to conclude at seven o'clock, we have a number of things on the agenda. I will say to you right up front that, uh, those can be postponed to the next meeting, or you can decide you'd like to continue to work for another thirty minutes and see what we can cover. What's your, what's your pleasure, Mr. Mayor?
I can have a thirty minutes.
Okay. Jack Emmett, Susan is gonna give a, a quick presentation, and the word quick is-
I definitely am a fairly quick talker, so I will do my best. Uh, thank you for this evening, a lot of this is gonna just be a recap, I met with you in the fall, and then we took a little bit of a break, so it should go fairly quickly. Uh, Jack Emmett, we obviously are back on the table for discussion for future, future options on that facility. Uh, this is what it looked like pre-Florence, this is what it looked like, this picture, I want you to just take a look real quick, is because of the size of the gym, I'm gonna get to in a minute, you can see we only have a handful of teens in there and they're pretty close in proximity. Obviously, post-Florence, really post-Florence, and again, post-Florence. Uh, for an update, we are back in front of the building, we're pleased to be in there, uh, we're just getting back into the groove of things after the- So I showed you a minute ago the gym size, and I know I have discussed this, in need of our facilities and where we're at with, uh, the lack of facilities, but I thought this was a good illustration of really how small that gym is. Jack Emmett's gym, uh, well, the, a normal-sized court for middle and high school, regulation size is what you would kind of call a half-court, but it is fifty by eighty-four. Jack Emmett is only forty and a half by sixty. So you can see that it's short in width, it's short in length, and then it's really even short in height. So we are very limited, as we've discussed in the past, on what Jack Emmett, we're limited from a program standpoint because we can't do anything, uh, from a league standpoint past our toddlers, we can't play any kind of older kids on a game on a court that's not any kind of regulation. The Commons has not only a college-sized regulation, that's the full court, but it also has the two side courts, in addition to pickleball and volleyball at the Commons. So it just kind of gives you a frame of reference as we kind of move forward the options. I'm gonna quickly recap, we've done a couple of things with you in the past, we've shown you some options, and we've also shown you some examples, so I've merged the two to kind of put the two to two together so you can see where we're at with, uh, moving forward. So option one, uh, when we came back to you with the engineering's ideas, these are options that are, uh, across the board. This option is option one, it is showing you basically a renovated Jack Emmett as it stands now, we do take out the gym, it's more of a multipurpose space, and we repurpose the front of the building into a lobby and a, a small amount of, 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 um, program space. So no gym, uh, it's just more of a, uh, of a multipurpose space. This is an example, it's a small example, but I'll be honest with you, it's hard to find a, an exact comparison on this one, this is, uh, one of the buildings in Raleigh. Option two, this is taking away the gym altogether, this is just a community center, this is just program space, we have room for classroom space, exercise, technology like a computer, computer room, I would compare this really to any rec center without a gym, uh, that was hard to find, I'll be honest with you, most rec centers in the state and beyond all have a gym connected, so a senior center out of Morehead was my best comparison for you on that, there's not a whole lot of facilities out there that don't have a gym attached. But you can get the idea, it's a community center and it has program space. Option three, this is basically using that space, engineering really went and got creative because we are logistically challenged at Jack Emmett on the footprint of what we have, that's always gonna be in the forefront of, of what we want to put forward to you as far as decision-making, but we are limited on what our needs are versus what our space really has. So this option shows you that property in the very, on the very backside, and it is a large facility, it has gym space, it has, um, probably the largest, I want to make sure I tell you which ones we're comparing it to, but this one right here is similar to what the Jack Emmett size is now, it just has one half-court, but at least it's that fifty by eighty-four. So if you take half of the gym of the Commons, or you expand the gym size of Jack Emmett, this would be a community center with one court. Makes sense? Okay. This one, uh, that, there's an example out of, out of Raleigh. This one, however, is really duplicating, uh, the creme de la creme, this is the Commons, so you have all of your two courts, you have a full-size regulation court going the length, and then obviously you have other, like pickleball, then you can put pickleball and volleyball in it, but it also addresses that lack of locker space. So this one really shows, if you were, if I were to show you the, uh, floor plan that we came up with, it shows you locker room space, restrooms, classroom space, this is the largest of the options, but that would gain us, uh, not only the gym that we lost, but it would at least give us some space, an additional gym as well. And then this is a really good comparison, we went up and saw that, that one is probably as close as of example, closest to our proximity as we can find. And then the fifth option is, uh, similar, but it is all gym, two courts and nothing else, sitting on the footprint where the other one is. It doesn't have, this footprint really doesn't allow for any other program space, it looks like it might, but it really is just all gym, two, it is two courts, uh, but it would basically be, that's it. So you can see we have a, a wide array of options, uh, this is an example that they renovated a facility, I tried to find a facility that another entity has taken and then renovated and added to it, and this one is out of, uh, Greenville. So, this, in short, is our summary, uh, obviously we have some options, current facility, a new facility, um, and then obviously some other new facilities. I, our goal, uh, today is not to necessarily give, have you give us any direction, our goal today is to have you think about it, I, I tried to do it quickly today, if you have any questions, I'm certainly open to answer those, but we would like to come back to you at the next workshop and really just get your direction on how we would like to proceed with Jack Emmett.
Let me give you a couple of, uh, quick thoughts. Option five doesn't provide any community center of space at all, I think that's a mistake for that neighborhood. As you think about this over the next two weeks- As you think about this over the next two weeks, I would encourage you to jettison option five. It provides basketball. It really doesn't meet the needs that the survey told us for that neighborhood. When you look at option four, there are going to be some challenges to build it. But if you're going to build another major gymnasium, this is not the location for it, in my opinion. That leaves you, and, and the reason why it's not, is because you want a gym like this to be positioned where it can be utilized for many of our tournaments. And to me, the Commons is the lo, is the logical place or someplace like the Commons. Why? Because you already have the other gyms that are in the neighborhood. You've got Jacksonville, you've got, uh, Northside, you've got the middle school. So right now, when we have the major basketball tournament in the summer, all of those gyms are in use. So in my opinion, if you're going to build another major gym, it should not be at this location. I will say to you, I think you need to build one, but not in this location. If you go back, I think realistically, it's either option one, two, or three. But you have to make that decision. And if it's not option one, two, or three, then what we're trying for you to do is tell us what option, what do we come up with? Five, option six should be. I'll remind you of a couple of financial things. For every four million dollars you borrow, you're going to, for twenty years, you're going to pay something in the vicinity of three hundred to three hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in principal and interest for twenty years. The other part is remember this. The insurance settlement for Jack Emmett was in round numbers, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Does that sound right? Let's just say seven hundred and fifty thousand. We've spent about forty-five thousand of that to put the front part of the building, the one-story part, back in use. So if you want to simply say, "We're going to restore Jack Emmett exactly like it was before the storm," you have the money to do it. But you would be restoring it, recognizing all of the limitations that you have on it.
Go back to option one there, just pull me real quick. Let me get my head around a little bit what you're... So you're, you're talking about in option one of doing away with the gym, but not, well, doing away with the actual basketball court and repurposing that space for, for a community center for other projects.
Yes, sir. We, we have it reconfigured, but basically it would become a multi, multi-use court, you know, multipurpose room.
I just wanted to make sure that was my understanding.
When you say multipurpose, is that they can't play basketball in there, or they can't...
I mean, we can. We play, we can play, you know, we can probably play, kids will play in any space you give them. If you put them...
Well, no, we're, we build it with a surface that's...
Yeah.
Non-wooded, basically. Non-wooded, like Commons.
Think of it this way. Option one is to restore the building exactly like it was, where it really doesn't have a basketball court, but it does have a basketball court. It's used for the, for the smaller children. The other thing that option one does is it, it refocuses the, uh, the building so that you're using the building from the parking lot side, not from the roadside.
That's real good.
Which is really important. I mean, whatever we do with Jack Emmett...
That option, when we came to you in, um, some months ago, we had talked about that option, it being one point four. It, it's adding a, you know, handful of...
So this one is closer, closest to the dollar that we received from insurance.
Yes, sir. Correct.
And what's three again?
Let's go look at... Now, two is nothing but a community center.
Tear down, tear down the existing building and put a new one in.
Now, let me give you just a point on this one. Even though it doesn't have a gymnasium, it does have two exterior basketball courts. Not that this would work year-round, but just as a concept, in Florida, many of the outdoor courts that we built were, were a combination of covered and outdoors. What that meant was they weren't heated and air-conditioned. They didn't have a lock on the door. They had a roof system over them. So think of building a large metal shed, bad name, but a large shed, metal structure over the outdoor courts. You could do that. Now, if it's thirty degrees, do you want six-year-olds out there playing basketball? Probably not. But for most of the year, by simply providing that type of a structure would be weather reasonable.
So the cost test, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh, cost estimate on number two, which is a whole new facility, was two point four. And then the cost estimate for number three?
Got it on there.
Okay.
Yeah, one was the only one that didn't have any price tag associated with it.
And I would say to you, you could do number one without going into depth. You just have to put it in your CIP.
Susan, are we not a...
I'm sorry?
Could this be emailed to us before?
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll send it out. Carmen, if you're...
Can you send all those slides to us?
Yes.
Any other thoughts before we move to the next topic?
Oh, yeah, I know what it is. Will this be, you're going to present this in front of the, uh, committee next meeting?
The recreation?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
You can do that.
I want to kind of talk stuff around in that meeting.
These are, this is, like I said, you've seen all of these before, so this is just definitely a recap on it, but I'll be happy to show that.
It'd be nice to have the recreation folks give us some sort of recommendation of some sort. I mean, you know, which, which one of these options they prefer. It helps, would help maybe in our discussion.
I don't know what it takes for the, in terms of rebuilding or remodeling or whatever, but I keep on having a thought that we need to do something for that neighborhood. And if we just invested rebuilding Jack Emmett, we're just joining the crowd and saying, "We're giving up on that area." I think we need to do something that gives some incentive for improving the New River neighborhood.
I think we need to start concern being developed with all this side of this, this, the city. Because we just lost, I think there was a Hellfood store here, and that's another, um, business that's moved out of here. So what we're going to do is to start investing on this side of the, you know, side of the city.
I would remind you that in the budget that you've already approved, and hopefully in March, we're going to be getting bids out for the four-block area. I will say to you, one of the reasons why the organic market left is they're afraid of how much business they're going to lose during the reconstruction period for the four blocks. They told me that personally. So, you know, uh, you're, you have already positioned the downtown for about two million dollars' worth of new investment right here. And hopefully, while you're still on track for March, April, to award some bids for that.
Possibly, at least an hour time.
Possibly sounds like no.
But we have options. We have multiple options.
But there's still, there's a hole in the city that you're basically talking about. And one thing about what Jack Emmett used to do, it used to tap into that Camp Johnson base too, at one time. But when you no longer had a recreation, recreation court there, then you lost that. So, you know, when they started changing the sta, standards and the three-point shot went into effect, so, um, I would take in consideration that too. You know, because the military does bring a whole lot to our community. But it, it would affect our overall area, so.
I wanted to follow up. I just realized the timeline of our advisory groups is going to be after the next workshop that we were hoping to come back to you. So I'm not sure, we can work on getting you some feedback from our advisory group, but, or we can push back coming back to you. But if you want an official recommendation from them, the timeline...
How about we do this? Let's see if they'll go and call a special meeting.
I do have, um, the input meeting scheduled for next week, so maybe I could do something along that timeline.
What day is that?
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Let's do it Monday. Let's see if you would agree with this. How about the staff go back and look at a combination of option one and option two that would give, um, a reasonable price tag, and as both, um, Mr. Jackson and Mr. Bittner have said, would show a good investment in the neighborhood. And we will, we will try to come back with some type of combination. The survey clearly shows that the community wants a lot of the things that aren't there today as far as computer rooms and classes, where they can learn how to cook and whatever, whatever.
Fitness.
Fitness, that type of stuff. The, the surveys do not show an overwhelming support for a gym. What it shows is, though, that we need something that really can build that community. So how about, uh, we will send all of this out, and we will come up with, uh, with a hybrid of option, uh, one B?
Call it option six.
Option six.
I think that's good.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
It'd be nice to have some, some feedback from, uh, from one of our boards.
I would like to see if we could meet next Monday, possibly.
Real quickly, commercial garbage update? To the gentleman?
Good job.
Carrie, Michael?
I apologize. I do not talk as quickly as Susan does.
You want Susan to present?
You might. Before we get started, I did want to take a quick opportunity to, uh, Carrie needs no introduction. I think everybody in the city knows who Carrie is. But Michael Connor comes from us, from the Marine Corps. I guess by way of Alaska for a brief period of time. He spent some time there. But Michael is our new sanitation superintendent. He is responsible for not only commercial garbage collection, but also residential garbage collection, so...
He's the new Carrie.
He is. He's the new Carrie. And, uh, one of the things that I'll, I will say about his background in the Marine Corps is when they needed something done, he's the guy they sent. Some of his, um, waste collection, uh, was in Haiti during the earthquake and in, um, were you in Mississippi or were you in? Yep, Mississippi. Mississippi during, or following Katrina. So he has some, um, unique experience in waste collection. So with that, we'll jump into commercial garbage. While I'm the one talking, they're the ones that get things done. So just quickly, um, tonight we'll give you, um, some historical information, uh, tell you where we are now, cover some financial information, tell you about our rates and services, uh, service fees, and then talk a little bit about some of the challenges we're currently facing, and then some of the things that we're looking at. As you probably remember, we got into this service in July of 2014. We got into it because of service, providing service to our business community. We had an, a private hauler contracted through the city, and we had a lot of complaints prior to the city getting into the service. We started the service with eight hundred and thirty-nine commercial customers. We purchased five, um, commercial vehicles, and, um, Carrie calls them refurbished. They were used vehicles. And we, um, also hired five drivers for those vehicles and then one fleet mechanic to help, um, fleet take care of those vehicles. And then, um, as you probably well remember, we had some significant challenges in that first year. And we ended up, within that first year, going through two rate increases. And the good news is, um, since then, we have not had a rate increase. Matter of fact, our, our last rate increase was in FY15. So currently, we have nine hundred and twenty-six customers. We serviced eleven hundred and twenty-four dumpsters. You'll notice it says paying up there. Those are the ones that we collect revenue from. We have, uh, four service levels. The minimum level is two-day-a-week, and then that runs right up to five-day-a-week. And you can see, uh, the number of containers in each of those, with the minimum service obviously being our most popular. And then we provide a Saturday service that is separate from these. Anybody in any of those service levels can get our Saturday service, and there's a separate fee for that. And then we have two hundred and thirty-six, uh, recycling customers. And, um, you'll hear me say this at least twice during this presentation. We do not collect any revenue from our recycling customers. That, that cost for us to collect and carry it to Sunoco is completely covered through our service fees. So we currently have, um, one container truck, which is basically what we use to deliver dumpsters, move them around. It's just a, you know, small, single-axle truck with a, a mechanism on the back to move containers. And then we have seven front loaders. I, I think the unique thing about this is, um, the first four you see, the two, two thousand and eleven, two, two, two thousand and thirteens, started this with us. There were four of the five used vehicles that we purchased. And if you'll recall, um, unfortunately, we wrecked the fifth, and we replaced that. We still have five drivers and one fleet mechanic, and all of the supervision is done by Michael. Through our, and, and really, he's covered under our residential. So we do, that is all the personnel in commercial. Uh, just a quick overview. I know you get our monthly, um, financials that we send out, but this is the, a summary of FY19. We had a total revenue of one point four million, or just over one point four million. We had total expenses of one point three million, so that works out to about ninety-five thousand dollars that we cleared over expenses. And our two largest expenses, um, the first one you can expect is salaries, which includes benefits, overtime, basically all things related to personnel, at three hundred and nine thousand. And then our second largest was actually vehicle repairs. To maintain our fleet in FY19, it was two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And I'll actually break that down in a little bit more in a few minutes.
All the vehicles paid for?
No, they are not. They're not.
So how much is dead service on it? Okay.
I can pull it up, or we can send it to you.
Next time.
The, um, and then we had fuel savings in FY19, so that's, you know, we, we budget at one level, and Ed does a good job of getting good, um, fuel prices. So we had fuel savings of about thirty-five thousand dollars. So thirty-five thousand of that ninety-five was fuel savings. Our fee is really comprised of two major components. The first is our cur, commercial dumpster service fee. Most of you know it as our tipping fee. It's what we charge to send the truck to the business and tip the dumpster, and then set the dumpster back down. And that is seven dollars and seventy cents per stop. So every time we tip a dumpster, that's what we're making to actually tip the dumpster. The other portion of the fee that is paid by the customer is the landfill fee, which is forty-nine dollars per ton. Basically, what we do is convert that number to cubic yards and then charge based off the capacity of the dumpster they have. So a two-cubic-yard dumpster has a different rate than an eight-cubic-yard dumpster just because of the amount of waste that can be put in those dumpsters. We also got into dumpster rental, and we, we kind of got it, and we, we dipped our toe in water at first when we were looking back historically. We got into this in FY15, and it, we really just had a few dumpsters out there in the beginning. But now, um, you can see the, the total number of dumpsters that we have. I broke it out by size. And then we put our most recent purchase cost and then our monthly lease. And I think what you'll see is generally our payback is about twenty-four months. Little bit shorter on the smaller dumpster. And then, um, this is at least the second time I'll mention it. We also have eighty-seven recycling dumpsters out there that we do not charge for. So there is no fee dumpster rental, or tipping, or disposal associated with our recycling, our commercial recycling program. So getting into some of the challenging, uh, challenges that we face with, um, our commercial sanitation. One is our staffing level, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that, but really, we don't have any backup. And, and I really will explain why in just a minute. Our equipment and, um, breakdowns, mechanical issues, and a... Our equipment and, um, breakdowns, mechanical issues and availability are really a challenge even with seven vehicles. We, uh, some of our dumpsters that we don't maintain don't have lids on them. Hence, once it rains, trash gets wet, it gets heavier, we tip it, it adds to our weight and to our cost. And then we have additional service requests. And this is something that we're looking at, but periodically we receive a call from somebody that we are unable to service their dumpster because unbeknownst to them, somebody else has thrown something away in it. For example, a couch or something like that that we're unable to tip. Well, that business might be a lawyer's office and they may not, or a small shopping center and they don't have any way to get in and, you know, get that debris out of their dumpster so that it can be serviced. So they call us for assistance. Well, that takes, you know, equipment and manpower to, um, help those businesses out. So that is something that we're currently looking at also.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Why do we have coverless dumpsters?
Uh, they have plastic lids on them and periodically they get missing or they, they get broken off or, and Michael's people do do a good job of, um, flagging those things so that we can, um, notify the businesses. But it takes time for them to do that and, and then the plastic lids are there are not waterproof.
Is that the major reason we got ticketed so many times?
Well, that certainly doesn't help, yes, sir. It, it adds, the wet wa- um, wet loads actually add to, um, the heaviness of our loads and, um.
Would it pay us to put the covers on it?
Well, there, there is actually some discussion of whether maybe our dumpster corrals need a roof instead of doors.
Well, some of, some of the other, and I, and I mean to take, and some of the, some of the other issues that we have as far as.
Yeah, Mike, that sounds wonderful.
Yes, sir, some of the other issues that we have as far as the dump is concerned and Michael can address this more specifically. A lot of times apartment complexes will throw trash inside the corral and it gets pulled and we have to pull those containers out and clean out the dumpster corrals because the apartment complexes don't have the maintenance people to do that. So that also adds to the, the additional responsibilities that Michael and his people have taken on in order to give that, that quality service.
And understand, uh, Mr. Bittner, the, uh, we don't own all the dumpsters. So I can't, I can't go and fix waste industries or waste management dumpsters. I can't touch GFL's dumpsters in a certain aspect. So we conduct inspection on our dumpsters that are out there. And we've seen a big turn as we've advertised those out. I just bought seventeen thousand dollars worth of dumpsters and that, now that our businesses know that we have them, they see their, how well we do on a good inspection schedule and keeping from rusted bottoms and dilapidated dumpsters and broken hinges and locking mechanisms, they're turning to us and, and getting away from the private carriers' dumpsters. Uh, when we first went into this thing, we kind of absorbed, you know, the footprint of the assets and the infrastructure that was there. So that's a big, that's a big issue too, is trying to get the, the private haulers to do their part. Uh, but we're getting better at it and I'm really annoying, so I call them a lot and, uh, we getting the job done.
And, and if you'll recall shortly after, um, was it Dorian? Hurricane Dorian, the MRF actually shut down because of wet loads and wouldn't take recycling. Was it Dorian?
It was Dorian for a week.
So it's, it's one of those, the, it is a constant battle, but those, you know, we try to stay on top of those dumpsters, but it, it does create challenges for us.
And so during that week, all of the recycle went to the landfill, right?
Uh, no, sir, we just didn't collect it.
You did what?
We didn't collect it.
We didn't collect it, we held it.
We just told all the customers.
Hold on, hold on, like, keep the lids down on it.
So they just, you didn't collect it all?
Well, a lot of those materials, sir, are, are prohibited from landfill. So for us to collect up all that plastic and dump it in there, we'd really be in violation.
And the glass.
So we leave that up to Sunoco to decide what's not recyclable and then they can go dump it in landfill, let it be on them.
So I talked about, I, really I'm just going to focus on the two biggest challenges. One is staffing, the other is equipment. The reason staffing is a challenge is our routes are now such that we, depending upon the day, we have four or five routes. So we only have five driver, drivers. So if a driver is sick or on vacation or, you know, we have equipment issues, we have staffing challenges. The good thing about our staff is that of the five people we originally hired, we've only lost one in, I guess we're up now five years. So we've only had one changeover in staff since we started this program, so that's great, you know. Our, our drivers know their routes, our, they're familiar with the equipment, they know how to work the equipment. It reduces our, um, cost in servicing, you know. But when we have somebody out or we have to, um, serve a route, we either supplement with overtime or we bring a residential driver over to help us and we do have some that are trained. The one transfer or one leave that we did have, we actually filled it almost immediately with an in-house person that had been cross-trained. So there is some advantage to cross-training. But, um, it does create problems when you have five routes and you have five people to serve one. And our routes are currently based to where, um, when we do run our five routes, they're based almost completely on an eight-hour day. So we really don't have a lot of, um, I know you're familiar with task performance. We really don't have a lot of task performance time on the commercial side. Moving to our equipment, this is our single largest challenge. We constantly face breakdowns, um, computer and electrical related issues. With the new emission standards, we have, um, exhaust maintenance. I've come to understand the term regen. Basically you have to burn off some of the, um, emission, I guess is the muffler, the.
That system.
That collects all that to meet the emission standards and we constantly have problems. And then you have things like hoses that break, which with that type of equipment is pretty frequently. And then we have blade and, um, just the body issues associated with the compaction. And then we have, um, one, one of the things that we've noticed is that at years three and four, we see pretty significant maintenance cost. Um, we, if you'll recall on the, the slide I showed our equipment, we have a two thousand and nineteen truck, a two thousand and eighteen truck and a two thousand and fifteen truck. And then we have thirteens and elevens. And the, there is quite a difference in the maintenance costs, the annual maintenance cost of those vehicles. This is a excerpt of the sheet that Michael keeps on a daily basis to show his fleet readiness. This one has a lot more arrows because it also has his residential vehicles on it. I took his commercial vehicles and this was as of twelve thirty-one. And you'll notice that, um, we have two that are yellow. They were up, but they had outstanding issues that still need to be addressed. And unfortunately, I think, um, one thirty-one you'll notice was down for a month, up and then down for another month and then back up. And I think it came up the week after Christmas and went down January third and is now back down. And then we have, um, one thirty-two and one thirty-three that are down. Some of these are things that, um, our fleet can handle and some of these are things that they cannot. Um, what, what we, we need to give Ed and his crew a lot of credit because when they go down, they come in to help us get these back up. You know, we don't run a, a normal day. Our day starts at, well, their day starts at three AM. So when we have a down truck, we're now behind and then once we get into that eight o'clock, you know, that eight to noon period, it's just not a great time to be collecting dumpsters. You know, businesses are trying to function and we're trying to get in and serve them and it, it creates a lot of challenges for us and for them. And then you'll notice that we have, you know, several trucks that are doing very well. I mentioned in FY nineteen, our total, uh, fleet cost was two hundred and seventy-two thousand. That does not include fuel, so I excluded fuel from that. Our two thousand and nineteen truck cost is two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to purchase. Our trucks that are one to three years old, so the two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and fifteen, the cheapest one was thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars to maintain. You can imagine that was our two thousand and nineteen. And then the most expensive was thirty-two thousand one hundred. If you look at our older trucks, the cheapest was forty-nine thousand nine hundred and I don't remember what, I think that was in two thousand and thirteen. And then our most expensive was fifty-three thousand eight hundred. So you can see that, once those trucks get past three or four years of age, they really start to have problems. And as we've done research, what we've learned is that's pretty much industry-wide. Our current life cycle is planned at ten years. So we're getting to the point now where we're supposed to start life cycling out some of those vehicles. Um, and we're looking at purchasing one new truck in your FY twenty-one budget. So you'll see that as a decision package in your budget. So currently we're looking at our equipment lifecycle, whether, you know, is the ten-year the right number or should we be looking at something less? Should we be looking at a three or four-year lifecycle? And if we did that, which, what would that look like? Is that something that you continue to finance that truck for five years or do you look at a shorter finance? Or do you look at possibly leasing that vehicle? Ironically, um, as we were looking at some of this, Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune approached us because, um, they have some very similar problems. Their service is much larger than ours, but, um, and they, as you can imagine, they don't have the staffing issues we have. They have plenty of drivers. The problem is their equipment is older than ours and, and far worse shape than ours. And they're really having prob- they're really having difficulties getting that equipment serviced. So they actually approached us about, you know, are there options like possibly leasing vehicles from us? Or leasing vehicles through us? So those are, that's something that, um, haven't gotten into the complete details of, but something that we are looking at of whether, you know, is there potential that we could solve our problem and their problem? Or could we work together to, you know, put some sort of package deal that would be beneficial for both of us? So as we're moving through, um, we'll continue looking at these. Of course, the, you know, the pros, cons, cost benefit analysis. We'll be reporting up to management and then over the next couple of months and then probably back to you in the February or, or March timeframe to talk a little bit more. And then of course, you know, we do have that vehicle in, as a decision package in your FY twenty-one budget and, you know, we're in the budget season, so. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions or, or give any additional information.
You talked about the base, um, do they run their own service?
They do, yes, sir.
Through, through?
Their sole service employees, yes, sir. And I always get the numbers messed up, but I think they have fifteen drivers and twelve vehicles and they service forty-five hundred dumpsters, so they're about three times larger than us.
But you said that they're unable to purchase vehicles?
That's correct.
So how would, why, why can they, why can't they purchase vehicles, but they can lease it through us?
Different, different accounts funding-wise.
But where the money comes from?
That's where the problem is, it's, it's capital money.
So, so we would buy the truck and lease it to them?
Or, or if we decide to lease, they can piggyback on our lease agreement.
Yeah, let's, uh, let Michael address that, please.
The leasing portion?
Oh, the, the, the reason why, the different pots of money and what they can buy and what they're going to.
So the base, if they want to, if they want to purchase equipment, it has to go through the DOD and they have to go through their federal acquisitions stuff. If they go into a leasing bid with us, they can work through the IGSa. Uh, and that gives them a lot more leniency and again, a different pot of money as, as Ron said.
But they can't go lease directly from Peterbilt?
Well, they cannot because they'd have to put that out through federal acquisition. And of course that cost would be at a federal rate, which would be, you know, significant. Uh, their problems with equipment, DOD-wide, is DOD's trying to break away from, you know, maintaining and owning a lot of their own internal services as they do with everything.
That was going to be my next point, I know and I don't, I don't want to be quoted on this, but I, I think that from Fayetteville, does the city of Fayetteville have a contractual agreement for trash service on the base?
Not, not sure about that, we'd have to ask.
I don't know if there's any opportunities in the future maybe for us to potentially provide a service.
That's why they're, that's why they're promoting, right, is them go ahead and make these.
With the.
Eventually we could see that happening, something like that.
I disagree with that. Uh, let's, let's get a little.
I'll agree with him.
The difficulty right now with the base is this. If they had no employees, we could hire employees and we could buy trucks and we could service them. But that's not the way the rules work. The rules work that if you have a civil service employee and his job is going to be eliminated, then they have to, they meaning the base, they have to find a replacement job for him at the same pay. That's not going to happen. I can also tell you that no, we can't afford to pay the same salaries that the base is paying their commercial drivers. Yeah, and I want to make sure, from my office, the only issue we're going to talk about with the base on commercial is is there a benefit to leasing them equipment through the city? That's the only thing that as the manager I'm going to bring to you. I am not going to bring to you, in the time that I'm still here, any concept of us taking over that operation, of us hiring their operators. I just don't see financially how it would work. I didn't mean to be so strong on that, but, you know, I'm the one who has to make that call and I'm telling you that's my call. Not anybody else on this staff is making that call.
I don't understand.
Do you understand?
I don't understand where that's coming.
Well, I, I agree with him too because I don't see, no matter what happens, how's it going to benefit this taxpaying citizens of Jacksonville?
We're not saying that it is.
Well, then, rest your case.
Is there a conversation about?
Possibility somebody.
Possibility of us providing the service if you, and I'm not suggesting we do or don't. The whole purpose of the, the DOD contractual change is give cities opportunities to partner with the bases for things that may be beneficial to both. And we talked about this in the past as it being one of the areas in the future to explore. I'm not saying we should or we shouldn't. My question was, is that part of this conversation or just the vehicles? I don't think.
I think what I understood was just over the vehicles, maybe getting, taking advantage of our leasing ability.
And that's a win-win for both.
Yeah, it allows us to get a better rate. If we were, you know, obviously the more you lease, the better.
And I think that's the kind of contracts that they're trying, you know, to, to do as far as inter-local agreements and all, to get that, to, you know, to do that, not for us to take over their operation. And I agree with you on that, I don't think that's.
Some rumors got spread in the community and led to that kind of discussion. Yeah, let me say it a little differently. We've looked at the concept of us taking it over completely.
You haven't.
We have.
Okay.
And what we found is just what I said. There's civil service employees, there's no place for the base to put the employees. So if we took it over, we'd have to find jobs for fifteen people. Okay, we can find those jobs, that's what they're currently doing. But the problem is we would have to pay them the same rate that they're currently making. Our rate structure simply would not afford that. So I can say to you, from the operational standpoint of us taking it over completely, we've looked at it, it does not work financially for us. The only thing that we are bringing to you or will bring to you or possibly bring to you, whichever right way to look at it, is this. Is there a benefit to the city of us leasing? I'm going to break this into two parts. Instead of owning our equipment as we currently do and have a ten-year lifecycle, I think where we're headed is one of two options. I'm just talking about city equipment now, not base. We need to shorten our lifecycle and we need to look at a combination of purchase and repair bills over a three or four-year period. Look at it from a lifecycle standpoint. What we're finding is two hundred and eighty-five thousand to buy it, sounds great. Guess what? You own it past three years, you're putting another forty or fifty thousand dollars a year into every truck. So at the end of the day, A plus B equals C. Maybe what we. Maybe what we do is say, no, we're going to get rid of these trucks after three years because our repair bills will be smaller. Second option we're looking at is this. Maybe we have an opportunity to lease it for two years or three years with the lease contractor, which Michael has been working with very well, to cover all of the big stuff. And all we pay for during that two- or three-year lease is tires, rubber hoses, and fuel. But that's the kind of analysis your, your staff is currently looking at. Now, as a totally separate analysis, if there's a way that by instead of leasing, pick a number, four city trucks, we're leasing fifteen trucks, eleven of which are for the base and four of which are for the city, and we can negotiate a better financial package to the benefit of the city, that may be something that we can bring back to you. Everybody?
Playing something?
Good?
Yeah.
I have a question for Michael, I always hear those.
Yes, sir.
Do we know who, which of our drivers could fit our gas mileage, another driver? Well, I mean, you have, you have an incentive to finish early, correct, for the residential? I mean, they're incentivized.
Well, that's both. Uh, it works for commercial and residential, they're both about task performance.
Which means, they're done, they're done for the day.
They're done for the day, they get eight hours.
So I mean, they're incentivized to get it done as fast as possible. And how you drive a vehicle obviously affects mileage.
Uh, this is a loaded question, so, yeah.
But we have no concept of who gets the best, who does the worst.
No, sir, there's a, there's a software out there that we've examined that would give us all the, you know, driver details, driver actions. Um, it's expensive, very expensive.
You know how much gas goes in it and how many miles it goes, I mean, that's not...
Well, it's tough to track that, sir, because they don't, um, with, with the drivers, we hot-seat some trucks, so, you know, as though we have drivers that have their favorite baby that they wanna drive every day, that may not work out, um, as much as they have and ha, I have to tell them, no, you're taking this truck.
You gotta sign a vehicle too.
Right. So it's, it's tough to say that. And then we also have help routes as well, you know, sometimes, um, say you're picking up a piece of Northwoods and, uh, it's exceptionally heavy, um, somebody who picks up another section, like, you know, where Mr. Massey lives, over in Hydrally in that area in Plantation, hey, that's not as heavy, so he's gonna break off and come over and pick up a piece of, you know, Route Two or Route One. So it'd be tough for us to track that.
I see, the mileage.
Now, there, there is software out there that you can get, that, that tracks driver actions and driver habits and will break down their actual mileage, top speeds, low speeds. Um, it's, it's impressive, but impressive costs a lot of money, to the tune of about nine thousand a month, just in the...
And it may not really help you.
Right, yeah.
What they, where they really tried to sell it was, if you have a lot of damage or you're not sure your drivers are reacting, what the software does is it monitors how they're behaving in the truck and what the truck is doing, and then it records their actions, like, were they on the phone or were they, you know, paying attention to something else? And it records, you know, a period of time and takes snapshots. And it's, and the other is it also shortens the routes for them. So it'll monitor, so you can, kind of like a GPS, you can say, we wanna pick this route up, and it'll monitor the turns, the signals, and it'll actually tell them where to go versus, um, so essentially, you could put anybody trained to drive the vehicle in any vehicle, send them on any route, and they would run that route most efficiently because the software is doing the work for them.
And it would also, to your point, sir, it, it, you'd log in as the driver. So it doesn't matter what piece of equipment you're on, we can track driver actions.
That's right. But it's very expensive.
I mean, the trucks, and of course, on the residential side, uh, you know, you have an array of years of trucks and, and body types of trucks. So, I mean, it, you know, we can, we can argue that, yeah, the newer trucks drive a little better than the older trucks and that got a little different. But I, I think right now what we try to focus on is, you know, I want efficiency and I want things to be expeditious, but I want things to be safe. Uh, so that's what, that's what I harp on the most, is make sure that our, our practices and our SOPs are getting the job done for the citizens and doing it safely. Luckily, our drivers are, are really good and, uh, we haven't had a, I don't think we've got a speeding ticket or a...
I can't wait.
But we've been doing really well.
I think we know some people about that.
The other thing that I want to add in, um, and, you know, we've talked about efficiency and cost and some of those things, but I think it's really important to note that we got into this because of service. And if we have a driver that pulls up to a dumpster and it's blocked for a reason, uh, we have, you know, software that they can take a picture and note that it's blocked, but very quickly, Ms. Terry or Michael or somebody tries to get in touch with the owner of that container and we still try to service them even if we have to double back along that route. And that does cost us time and money, but that's the service that we've set to provide.
And it's, it's service that they wouldn't get. I mean, for a great example, just this morning is, I mean, yesterday afternoon was Blaze Pizza. I mean, Blaze Pizza just went in, uh, they just opened up for business a week ago. Um, they contracted their dumpster rental through GFL. GFL installed two dumpsters, told them, hey, we'll let the city know. No one told us. Uh, so I get a phone, I got an email from the manager of Blaze Pizza, he says, hey, man, I'm, I'm dying here and it's four o'clock in the afternoon, I got trash piled up to the, to the heavens and I don't have an account, he does, he's not on the route, he's not anything. Uh, I had a driver in, uh, you know, a little cross-contamination, as I call it, pulled one of my residential drivers in, went down there, serviced that dumpster, his people went out there, refilled the dumpster, we picked it up again this morning, they loaded the dumpster again, we dumped it again, uh, later in the afternoon. So that's three dumps they got instantaneously. That service they wouldn't receive from waste management or anywhere, it's just too big of a conglomerate to do that. But the city, they knew they could call the city, there's one throat to choke, it's mine, they can call me and say, hey, help me. And we were there and we got it done for them. And now you have, you don't have bags of trash piled up that, you know, vermin and everything else are getting into and tearing it apart. And, you know, here's this beautiful area we just built and it looks appeasing again, so that's the service we provide.
We recognize that y'all would, uh, like to stay until nine o'clock with some of the rest of the responsibility, so it's acceptable. Uh, we will close and have the rest of these agenda items. What I would like to do is take, uh, just one minute, we're going to start adding to every workshop and to every city council member at every city council meeting, a census moment. And so I'm gonna ask Glenn if he will get in here very, very quickly and run through the census a minute. Why is this important? We are within ninety days of getting this census up and running. We have to advertise to the citizens of Jacksonville why this is important. So I'm gonna ask Glenn, and then I'm swimming as fast as I can here. We're gonna cover the census one oh one. Please.
Yes, sir, thank you. Well, I can talk fast. So we'll, we'll fly through this as it was there and this. Everyone knows what the census is, that's not any surprise to anybody on this, um, in this, sitting around this table, but basically it counts, the, the order is to count every person in the United States. It's an empirical count, not an estimate. And consequently, it is required by Article One, Section Two of the Constitution, and it's supposed to be done every ten years. We know what the results are from it, it, it allows us to have re-representation and redistricting. And so toward the end of that situation there, uh, it also gets some revenue that comes to us. Um, you've heard, uh, or you would've heard about the pile bill and talking about the item that's not on there, but basically, the federal study showed that about one thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars comes to a per person for everyone counted in the census in North Carolina. And two hundred and five dollars from state funds comes. So what did we lose? Well, in the 2010 impact, because we know empirically that there were fourteen thousand people who were deployed at the time, and we know that there was another group of people that takes it up to twenty-two thousand, that we know were not counted in the census. And so consequently, you take that sixteen twenty-three per person and multiply it by that number and then times ten years for the decade, plus the two hundred and five dollars for the state, and this community, this county, lost four hundred and two million dollars. Think what could've happened to this community had those federal and state funds come to this community as it was. The census is easy to fill out, it's a, it is a wonderful thing that can happen there and you can do it online this year, you can do it on phone, or you can just ask for it in paper, as it is too. And it is secure, I mean, we're, cyber threats and all sorts of things, Facebook has even announced a number of initiatives now to try to, um, to interrupt any sort of effort to, to bring out bad information. By, and it stays confidential for seventy-two years, and that was considered at the time the lifetime of a person, so you could get at, at that information for genealogical research. And a lot of people use the census records to prove what it is they've done and things such as that. And it's our civic duty, some stuff that we should do in our community. I do wanna mention one quick note here. Not only did we lose twenty-two thousand people, but Jacksonville lost its, its ranking. We were the tenth most populous city in the state. After the 2010 census, we dropped to 2014. Now, remember, there's the American Community Survey that looks at some other things, but that didn't count. When they're looking at representation, when they're looking at those, those results that have to depend on what the census is, we've lost it for a decade. And consequently, the state lost a chance at another congressional seat. What's the 2020 effects? There's been some significant study on that, it says that North Carolina will be ten percent greater. North Carolina will get its fourteenth congressional seat. Anzo County's gonna top out at two hundred thousand, it's a hundred and seventy-seven thousand out of the 2010 census, estimates are that it'll go over two hundred. And obviously, all these represent redistricting efforts will take place. So help us spread the word. March twelfth is when the cards are supposed to arrive in Jacksonville mailboxes to come and fill out, online or such there. They will not get them in some places, such as Census Track Twenty-Six, AKA the New River. They're, because the internet penetration in that area is so poor, they're actually gonna send them paper forms to begin with.
And again, the, the census is?
April first, where you are at April first.
Glenn, you really gotta get involved in the census business.
Thank y'all for your time, Sead. Thank the staff.